Councilor White, would you please read the pledge?
I hereby declare the United States of America and to their republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, council is grateful to have Apostle David Judah of Vintage Grounds Church to pray with us. As a welcome to council.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Thank you, council members. Shall we pray? Dear God in heaven, we thank you for this august body. Father, these are the men and women you have appointed for this city. You have left us without evidence. Oh God, therefore, we pray that you will use them mightily for the voiceless. Father, we pray, oh God, that you put the spirit of excellence upon them. Lead this city in the direction that you have intended. Let it be the city for the refuge. Let it be a city where men and women can come to and enjoy life and liberties as you have intended for this nation. We pray for the mayor of this city. We pray for the councilmen. We pray for the leadership of this city, that they may know that you rule in the affairs of men. We thank you that you have made this place a haven for all citizens of the world to find refuge in Columbus. We thank you. In Jesus' name we have prayed. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorn's Favor, Green, Reemy White, President Harden. Any person who takes any action to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion to disentangle the reading of the journal? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorn's Favor, Green, Reemy White, President Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the journal? Hearing none, the journal is approved. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be ran to the record?
Not at this time.
We'll go around the dials for any announcements or resolutions by my colleagues, starting with Councilmember Bangston. Thank you. Councilmember Barosa de Padilla.
Thank you, Council President. I have two announcements this evening and one resolution. The first is, we'll make another announcement next week, but want to invite folks out to, we're doing our first Link Us Town Hall on the West Side at West High School next Thursday, the 25th at 6:00 PM. And I'm co-hosting with Councilmember Green. This will be an opportunity for folks, residents, to come out and learn more about our proposed Bus Rapid Transit system, learning more about all of the good things that Link Us will bring into our community. So I hope folks will join us. We'll have an official invitation up on our social media channels. Also, I want to make sure, do we have our folks from the crew here yet? Great. Okay, perfect. So also happening next week, very exciting. Don't know if folks have heard about a little event called the MLS All-Star Game that'll be happening next week on Wednesday, July 24th at Lower Dot Com Field. Our All-Star Game kicks off an exciting month when the crew in Columbus will also host iconic English Premier League clubs, Aston Villa, Chelsea, and Manchester City. We're attracting an influx of visitors and showcasing our great city, our club and venues to quite literally the world. Our hometown coach, Wilfred, will be coaching the All-Star Game and will be featuring five of our Columbus Crew All-Stars. So now I'd like to invite our crew, from the crew, to come on up. Josh Glassing, the president of Business Operations, up to the podium. And I want to thank Isa Tall, our general manager, as well for being here. So Josh, if you want to come down and tell us a little bit about what folks can expect next week.
I've got Isa here with me as well. Council President Harden, council members, thank you so much for having us here. You know, we've been here a few times over the course of the last couple of years, and most of those instances have been because we were about to win a trophy or because we just won a trophy, right? And that's pretty cool. And Isa, our GM, is the architect of that on-pitch success. This is a little bit different, right? This is the MLS All-Star Game. This is one of two tent pole events for the league every single year, the other being the MLS Cup, which we've hosted two of the last four right here in Columbus. The All-Star Game is much more of a reflection of the city, the people in the city, and the infrastructure of the city, less about on-pitch success. And what we see next week is a culmination of a tremendous amount of work by the city council, the city of Columbus, Franklin County, the state of Ohio, to come together and create something in Lower Dot Com Field in a city like Columbus, Ohio, that is deserving of the biggest events in Major League Soccer annually. This is an event that's selected to be here. We didn't win enough games to force the league to come here. The league said the best place for this event in 2024 is Columbus, Ohio. And that's really, really exciting. And we're always, we do not take lightly the honor and the privilege to shine a light on central Ohio, on the city of Columbus, using the beautiful game, the global game of soccer. And we're going to use that tool when and where we can. The All-Star Game is obviously the headline event that takes place next week, but there's so much more to next week. There's a substantial amount of community engagement every single day. That starts on Saturday with the soccer celebration at McPherson's Commons. This is a free event, free festival, to anyone in the city of Columbus to showcase the game of soccer, how it's played, the history of soccer. There'll be MLS heroes there. It's a really special event, open to the community. On Monday, we'll have the Day of Service at that Nationwide Arena. We're going to pack 100,000 lunches for the benefit of student success storage and Mid-Ohio Food Collective. On Tuesday, we're going to host hometown heroes in collaboration with Black Players for Change to bridge the divide in athletics and society with black and brown children. We're going to, on Tuesday, host a Special Olympics at Historic Crew Stadium. This is a free event, open to the public, again showcasing people of different walks of life playing the beautiful game. On Wednesday, we're going to host a Community Day. This is an extension of the Crew's community mission to advance youth soccer and education in the state of Ohio. And we're going to pack backpacks, school supplies, all in advance of the upcoming 2024-25 school year. On top of this, it's so much more, right? We're engaging next week. But as we said in 2019, when we broke ground on Lower Dot Com Field, we were going to use this as a mechanism to do more. All-Star Game is one. On the 27th, the following Saturday, we're going to host Crew versus Aston Villa. Aston Villa is in the Premier League. They just qualified for the Champions League, the top club stage in the world. We're going to host a friendly. That's an incredible match, sold out. Another opportunity to shine an incredible light on the city of Columbus. And then a week later, we're going to host an open practice on Friday afternoon at Lower Dot Com Field between Man City and Chelsea. And then the following day, Man City and Chelsea are going to take each other on at the Shoe in front of upwards of 100,000 people, right? This is a beautiful thing that we're able to do with the power of sports, that we're able to do with the power of soccer. And we are just fortunate stewards of these events, of the Columbus Crew. And I'd be remiss if I didn't thank everyone on the council for all of the work over the course of the past five years, and even in today and last year, to bring this event here. It is an effort that is so much more than just a Columbus Crew. Without the city council, without the mayor's office, these things do not happen. So a warm and sincere thank you on behalf of Isa, myself, the Hazen family, Johnson family, Edwards family, to all of you for all of that work that you've done for the Columbus Crew, for Lower Dot Com Field, and ultimately to the benefit of the city of Columbus.
And Josh, I wanted to say thank you. I have two very, very excited soccer players at home and a big soccer fan who have been watching the Copa, who have been, they're very excited about all the things that are happening next week. I also just want to say thank you for also ensuring that the events next week are accessible to folks in the community, that aside from watch parties, there's ways that folks can engage, there's different price points for folks to come out and watch, you know, the All-Star Match, to watch other things, and to really be engaged in this very historic event that quite literally will bring thousands of people from across the world, but also millions of dollars into our economy in this next week that allows us to do all the great things for our city, for our young people, for all the soccer lovers and non-soccer lovers. We'll get them soon. But I just wanted to say thank you. And I wanted to open up to my colleagues if there's anything else y'all want to say or any other remarks or questions.
No, thank you, council member. This is a really big deal, and I think that that's why we're taking this moment, to make sure that the community feels a part of it, that this is something. I've been saying recently that Columbus actually deserves these things now. And as a kid that grew up here, it's really exciting to be in this moment where our hard work, the collaboration, the dedication, and an amazing team and ownership has gotten to a place where we get to do the big thing, and this is the big thing. So we look forward to being a part of it and celebrating Columbus, the Crew, and really just our ability to host an event at this magnitude in our city. So thank you so much.
And if y'all do not follow the Columbus Crew's IG, it is lit. And it has a list of all of the, it has a list of all of the events happening in the week. They can obviously go to the website if folks want to find out what's happening and where they should be next week to get in the game, quite literally. So thank y'all for making the trip down here, and thank you again for all that you do for our community.
Isa, are we coming back in December to talk about trophies? I hope not on the record, not on the record.
Thank y'all for being here. Yes, we should give a round of applause. I'm going to blame the gloomy weather and maybe some other announcements on the gloominess. Maybe we might be filling in here today. Next, I do have one resolution for presentation. That's Resolution 0191X2024, to recognize August as a month, as the Gift of Music Month. The Gift of Music is an annual drive that places musical instruments in the hands of deserving schoolchildren and provides them with lifelong positive tools of change. The drive coordinated through Music Columbus and various sponsors. Music Columbus is a collection of musicians, songwriters, music business professionals, educators, business and civic leaders from all walks of life brought together by their love of music. They dedicate, they are dedicated to the belief that through the support of music we can create richer, happier, more vibrant lives and an economy for the people of Columbus. I now have the pleasure of introducing the executive director of Music Columbus, Bruce Garfield, here to talk about the organization and the Gift of Music Drive, and most importantly, how all of us can get involved. Bruce?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Councilmember Barosa de Padilla. On behalf of our small and mighty team and the thousands of music creatives in Columbus and those who are on their way to becoming, I want to thank everybody for this honor. Anyone that knows me well knows it's impossible for me to have a two-minute conversation or more or less, but I'll try to make it work today. Thanking you as a city council, Council President Harden, and Chief of Staff Michael Brown, Mayor Ginther, Tom Katzenmeyer, and the entire team at GCAC, as well as all the leaders that are shaping the future of Columbus. I thank them and yourselves for understanding and supporting what the power of music can do for Columbus with respect to education, human and workforce development, cultural enhancement as a major driver of music tourism and economy. The programs that we've been able to offer, from the Gift of Music and putting an instrument in a young person's hands, to our Earn as You Learn internship and workforce development program, to unheard stages for young emerging artists, to our summer Better Together Music incubator, have all been fruitful, and it's because of the support we get. And we are now on the road to becoming recognized as the Midwest music capital of America, and it's you that are helping fuel this engine. With that, thank you very much.
And Bruce, I have to say, we had a conversation about this a while ago, and I told you, my daughter's future trumpet career was, unfortunately, it was a casualty of the pandemic because she started playing right before. And this trumpet quite literally went away into a room in our house because she didn't quite know how to play it, and I'm not sure this was the most hygienic instrument to play during a time of COVID. And we've had this trumpet in our house. And so I promised you that I would bring the trumpet to give to you, and I did it today because I knew if I said I'd wait till the next time I saw you, it wasn't going to happen. But before I do that, I wanted to just say thank you for, I know that we have some instrumental music players up here and certainly lots of music lovers up here, and we know the power of music. It helps to transcend the differences that we have. It helps to heal. It helps to open up an entire world to our young people and help them imagine a possibility, helps them to escape, helps them to cope. And so getting instruments that I'm sure we all have at home. We also had an extra clarinet, flute, and guitar at my mother's house. We had a whole band. I don't know, that was probably the casualty of other life circumstances, but for those instruments that folks have at home and they want to donate, how best can they do that during the month of August?
All the information is on thegiftofmusic.info. And if you have no instrument to donate, it's okay because we'll take a cash donation, which will convert into buying instruments. I want to add that I've enjoyed a lifelong career in the music industry. And when I think back, I guess my career really began with coming from a not-too-well-off family, and I was afforded the ability for my parents to rent a $2 a month trumpet. And that trumpet is, I think back about, what did that do for me? And when I entered the music industry, I never reflected on that trumpet until I started working as the executive director of the Music Commission and with the Gift of Music Drive, which has got personal significance to me. I reflected back and said, oh, that taught me how to outdo my competition because I could talk music to musicians. And I wasn't just a suit, pardon anyone who's wearing a suit, but I wasn't a suit. And again, it was because of a program that the New York City Department of Education instituted. My parents couldn't afford that trumpet for $2 a month, they could spring for it. So it's really near and dear to me what I do, and I'm thankful I landed in Columbus. I thank my wife for growing up here and everybody for helping me to take this position so I can give back.
Well, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from my colleagues? I encourage folks, please, those instruments, I know we all have them somewhere in your house, please look for them. There are 12 locations all over the city that folks can drop off the instruments. Please do that. Give it to a worthy, this is for the next Arnett Howard, the next Miles Davis that might come out of our community, or the next kid who just needs that escape, and this is a thing that they will love to do for life. So with that, I move for passage.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorn's Favor, Green, Reemy White, President Harden.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
It would be another two years before I saw Bruce and that trumpet got in the right hands. So thank you again, and that's all for me, President.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember De Akauer.
Thank you, Council President. As I read my resolution, I'd like to invite the APS team to come forward. Tonight, I am proud to present Resolution 0186X2024, to declare July as National Park and Recreation Month, and to celebrate Columbus Recreation and Parks Department for its role in creating spaces, places, and programs where all residents of the city of Columbus can connect with nature, wellness, and creativity. With July being National Park and Recreation Month, and today being the 114th birthday of our Columbus Rec and Park Department, I want to recognize all the important work the apartment does for our residents. And to that end, we have a little show and tell this evening. I recently had the opportunity to partner with CTV on making a video highlighting Columbus's amazing recreation opportunities. I'm Columbus City Councilmember Nancy De Akauer, inviting you to celebrate National Parks and Recreation Month during July. Did you know we have 410 parks, 170 playgrounds, 20 nature preserves, 230 miles of trails, and three reservoirs? Lots of people know about our famous parks, Schiller, Saguado Mile, Good Dale, but we have many other hidden gems. Come along with me and check out some of the great spots we have throughout Columbus where you can enjoy recreation and parks. We're here at Big Run Park in the southwest part of Columbus. This is a great park for enjoying a variety of things that our Recreation and Parks has to offer. We have a wonderful playground. We have lots of trails through the woods for you to enjoy, and we have Derby Hill. It is one of the few hills in the country for soapbox derby races. We invite you to come enjoy any of our parks throughout the city of Columbus. Columbus Recreation and Parks, it's where you belong. My husband's fly rod made an appearance on there. I was not allowed to actually use it to fish, but my husband would allow me to carry it. So thanks again to CTV for their help putting that amazing video together. And I'd now like to turn it over to our hard-working members of the APS program to share a few words.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Thank you, all the council. My name is Maggie Davis. I'm the Program Director of the Jobs Readiness Program. We have 319 youth participants employed in the city of Columbus. I brought five to introduce themselves to you all.
Hello, my name is Tephan Wallace.
My name is Landon Henry.
Hi, my name is Akariana Anderson.
Hi, my name is Darrell Smith.
Hello, my name is Claire Collins.
Thank you, council members. My name is Lyric Easley. I'm the Youth Development Specialist with the APS Job Readiness Program, which this program prepares youth for the future that builds, I'm sorry. The APS Youth Development Specialist, the youth, I'm sorry, again.
It's okay. We all get nervous up here.
Again, thank you. My name is Lyric Easley. I'm a Youth Development Specialist with the APS Job Readiness Program, which prepares youth for future and gives them mentorship skills, leadership skills, and work experience. I'm honored to accept this resolution on behalf of Columbus Recreation and Parks. Today, we celebrate July as National Columbus Recreation and Parks Day. This month acknowledges our roles department plays in creating a stronger community. I am one of many staff who have personally experienced this program. I'm inspired, I was inspired to join the team. I participated in the APS Job Readiness Program. The program has impacted me, and now that I worked with the program, I get to build the youth that are by me. We are grateful for the continued support of city council in our community. Together, we can make Columbus a vibrant place to live, work, and play. Thank you.
That's awesome.
Thank you all for the importance that you do. Thank you all. And hey, don't feel bad about being nervous. Everybody gets nervous when you come up and have to speak to the podium. But thank you all for the work that you're doing and for the rest of the team, just being engaged in this process and all the ways that it makes you grow is just really fabulous. And so we're really honored to have this program as part of our Recreation and Parks. But we also want to honor all of our Recreation and Parks staff. A lot of people have no idea just all the things that Recreation and Parks does, and it's all possible due to the amazing staff and volunteers, from groundskeepers, swim instructors, community center managers, all of those different instructors, and of course, our director, Reese, that whole team. We really appreciate all the work you do, and thank you for all your dedication and commitment to promoting the health and well-being of our residents. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, then I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorn's Favor, Green, Reemy White, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you, Council President. That's all for me.
Thank you. Press Pro Tim.
Thank you, Council President. If you're hearing from me, we're talking about ZONE IN. So want to announce some timeline updates to the ZONE IN initiative. It's been 97 days since the original proposal was updated to update our zoning code comprehensively for the first time in 70 years. We've talked here at council quite a bit about going through a vocal process with our residents, and our intention has always been for council to have legislation hopefully before it, before our August recess. I'm excited to announce this evening that the ZONE IN legislation will be formally submitted at council with amendments and will be available to the public this Thursday, July 18th. That legislation will reflect changes made to the original proposal based off the more than 1,800 formal comments made by members of the public during the 60-day public comment period. The council president and I will be joining Mayor Ginther a week from today, Monday, July 27th, 22nd, for our press conference outlining the changes to the original proposal. Those updates will be subject to a fourth ZONE IN public hearing, which will be hosting here in council chambers next Wednesday, July 24th. This will allow council and the public to review the final legislation before it comes for a formal vote at our last meeting on July 29th before recess. I know that was a lot of different dates I just threw at folks, so I'm going to break those down just to make sure that folks understand what is happening and when. So this Thursday, July 18th, council will receive the final ZONE IN legislation with those amendments. That will be made available to the public on the ZONE IN website. And then Monday, July 27th or 22nd, the mayor and both council president and myself will host a press conference to detail those proposed amendments. Next Wednesday, July 24th, is a public hearing on that final legislation. So if members of the public want to provide additional comment or find out more about the changes that have been proposed, that's the best place to learn about that. Council will vote on whether to approve this update to our zoning code two weeks from today on July 29th. So we will be posting those dates on the council website just to make sure, again, folks have clear understanding of what the final weeks of this legislative initiative look like. With that, that's all I have at this time.
Thank you, Press Pro Tim. Councilmember Favor.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Today is the final day to submit applications to be a part of the 2024-2025 Columbus Youth Council cohort. Students can apply at columbus.gov/cyc by 11:59 PM tonight. I encourage you to share this program with any rising junior or senior. On Wednesday, July 31st, my office will be hosting the Third Annual Housing for All Forum in partnership with Morpsy from 4:00 to 8:00 PM at Columbus State Community College. To learn more and to register, please visit housingforallcbus.com. And then last but certainly not least, I'd like to invite Ms. Denise M. Robinson to the podium as I present Resolution 0180X2024, to recognize Ms. Robinson for her 40 years of service to Alvis Incorporated in the city of Columbus. The challenges facing formerly incarcerated people during their transition back into society are far reaching, including finding and maintaining employment, locating safe and affordable housing, obtaining reliable transportation, reuniting with family, accessing healthcare, and dealing with the trauma of reentry, which can lead to recidivism. Alvis Incorporated is a nonprofit human service agency with over 50 years of experience, providing the encouragement and the tools people need with reentry. Ms. Denise M. Robinson, the president and CEO of Alvis since 2005, has been instrumental in the growth of the organization and its impact in the Columbus community. Under her leadership, Robinson has been breaking Under her leadership, Robinson has been breaking down barriers and connecting disadvantaged and vulnerable people to proven tools and resources to help expand Alvis's services. Throughout her decades of service at Alvis, Robinson has overseen the acquisition of troubled nonprofit agencies into the Alvis family of services to ensure needed resources won't be lost. Her relentless pursuit in meeting the needs of Alvis's clients to turn their lives around is based on her belief that everyone deserves a second chance. At this time, I'd like to turn the podium over to Ms. Robinson.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Favor. And thank you, President Hardin, and President Pro Tim Dorance, and all councilmembers. Thank you so much, and I thank you so much for this honor. Forty years, I started when I was 12. Please let that be on the record. But I mean, I can stand here, just like we witnessed with the young lady that was a little nervous. I've done hundreds of speaking engagements and comments, but I'm still nervous all the time, too, so I can attest to that. But I'm always nervous because one of the things that I always want is not for people to look at the patients that come through our programs and the clients that come through our programs as those people. And I get that a lot of times where other nonprofit organizations will call me and say, "I have one of yours." And what does that mean? What does that mean? If you're running services, how come you can't provide those services? But it's okay, because those five acquisitions and mergers that I've done is because organizations didn't want to do it or could not do it. And so I felt that it was very important for us to expand our services. When I started at Alvis, we had less than a million-dollar budget. When I became CEO, our budget was $7.5 million. Today, it's $42 million. And I don't say that just because, "Ooh, I got $42 million budget." I say that because it's that many people that need our help. And there's so many more that we are not seeing that are falling through the cracks. And what makes me driven is that I'm able to do more and more and more. I couldn't do more and more and more without all of you. You all have been so supportive of Alvis over the years. I get a little choked up. But thank you so much because you all have helped us, you supported us, you realize that people are people. People always ask me, "What do you call your clients?" You call them ex-offenders, you call them restored citizens. And I said, "How about, let's call them people. How about that?" Because they are people, and they should be treated as such. Every new person that walks through our door to work at our organization, I say to them, "If you can't look at our people and treat our clients like they're people, this is not the place for you to work. You should probably leave now. Not go through training. Don't take advantage of our resources. This is not the place for you." Because they are people. I don't think there's anyone in this chamber that can say that they've never made a mistake. I know I can't. And they've made some mistakes, some more egregious than others. And those that are more egregious than others are still behind bars where they belong. But there are people that are getting out. Over 85% of the people that are in prison are going to get out. And when they get out, they better come to a place like Alvis. I've had the great pleasure of being able to be the president of the American Criminal Association, which is a global organization that represents organizations, all kinds of criminal justice programs all over the world. And I've had the pleasure in the last two years... My presidency ends in January, but I had the pleasure to travel all over the world. And what I can say to you all, each one of you, is Columbus is where you need to be. This is the city that cares about its citizens. I have been everywhere in this country. I've been all over this world. Columbus cares about their people, and I am so proud to be able to have run services for over 40 years here in Columbus. But thank you so much for this honor.
Absolutely. Oh, don't leave. Don't leave. Don't leave. We got to give you some more flowers. Do any of my colleagues have any... Yes, Councilmember Lores Barrosa de Padilla.
So Denise, I have to tell you, when I was a boomeranger, I've always worked in social services, worked when I came back to Columbus. And I came back as a very, very baby executive director of a nonprofit where I had served as a young person. And your name is a gold standard in our community. And to watch another woman of color lead with grace and love and intention and humility because this is about your 40 years of service, and I think I heard you say "I" maybe twice during everything that you talked about, because it's always been about the work for you. And I think that what you have done, not just at Alvis, but what you have done in the community to build this field and to create opportunities and thinking about social services and how we work together and how people lead and how people show up is something that even if... I know you hear this, but even if you don't hear it, people see it. And it's something that I think especially for people coming up in the field, that they look up to you and they see you as an example, because I know I certainly did. And I think how you carried yourself, how you talk about the work, and how you created space and room for other women and other leaders is something that is remarkable and commendable in this work, because this is really love work. And it only gets harder. And to stay in it for this long just really shows how committed you are to it. So thank you.
Thank you, Council... Thank you, Council... Testing? Yes. Thank you, councilmember, for that. And I echo that sentiment. It was incredibly important for me to highlight the work that you have done, because when I think about 40 years, no one stays at a job for 40 years. And you have selected a profession that many folks will disregard or disregard the people that are there, but you have always led with a people-first model. You don't look at those individuals as anything but human beings. And when I think about the dignity that is required in doing this work and preparing folks to reenter back into society, knowing that they deserve as much respect as the next person, you are absolutely the person that can continue to do that job and also bring other people along and preparing them to do that work as well. It is so important in our community, and I thank you for dedicating your life to criminal justice reform and for helping elevate those who do need a second chance and advocating for that for them on their behalf. So thank you for that. And you all just had a really big celebration just a few weeks ago, and so this was our opportunity as a legislative body to give back to you, give you your flowers for the work that you do in our community. So thank you so much. With that, I'd move for adoption.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Day-Ackauer.
My apologies, by voice.
Bangston. Barrosa de Padilla. Day-Ackauer. Dorance. Favor.
Yes.
Green. Reemy. White. President Hardin.
Yes. Adopt it.
Thank you. That is all for me, Council President Hardin.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Green. Councilmember Reemy. Councilmember White.
Yeah. First, let me just state, as of today, I was COVID negative, but I am wearing the mask. Abundance of caution for my colleagues who clearly have moved very far away from me. But let this be a reminder that COVID is still a thing. If you're not feeling well, get tested and make sure you're taking the time to rest. Second, just use a moment of privilege to wish my legislative analyst a happy birthday. She will be turning 29 tomorrow. She hates the fact that I am even mentioning this today, but when you see her, tell her happy birthday. And then lastly, we're all excited about Jazz and Rip Fest this weekend. This year is even more exciting because the leftover food will fill plates, not landfills. Once festivities conclude, our partner Food Rescue, a subsidiary of Local Matters, will collect all the unused food that is donated by vendors to be repurposed by Rose Kitchen into nutritious meals. I want to thank my colleague, Councilmember Green, who oversees our local food action plan, the Departments of Public Service, Health, and Rec and Parks for coming together to achieve the shared goal of reducing waste in food insecurity. As I've mentioned before, the work of our committee is really about creating breadcrumbs towards positive change. I know this wasn't an easy lift for the event staff to work into an already large, complicated event in a short period of time, but I'm excited to kick off this first of hopefully many large food rescue operations and can't wait to report on the results to all of you next week. So thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Are there any comments by our elected officials, city attorney, city auditor? At this time, I request the following ordinance. We don't have any. Nope. Are there any other requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution on the consent agenda? Hearing none, may we now have a motion to waive the reading of titles of 30-day legislation by the clerk? Is there a second? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Day-Ackauer, Dorance Favor, Green, Reemy White, President Hardin.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read to the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
In Finance and Governance, we have ordinances 1684, 1732, 1859, 1897, 1904, 1958, and 2022-2024. Economic Development and Small and Minority Business, ordinances 1726, 1870, and 1901-2024. Public Service and Transportation, or Resolution 182X, ordinances 1863, 2017, and 2024-2024. Neighborhood, Recreation, and Parks, ordinances 1587, 1679, and 1920-2024. Workforce, Education, and Labor Committee, ordinances 1703 and 1856-2024. Housing, Homelessness, and Building, ordinances 1801, 1803, 1882, 1926, and 1945-2024. Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee, we have ordinances 1818, 1839, 1841, 1844, 1881, 1883, and 1888-2024. Public Safety and Criminal Justice, ordinances 1822, 1934, and 2055-2024. Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, ordinances 151, 1256, 1384, 1613, 1715, 1750, 1780, 1785, 1802, 1847, 1849, 1851, 1867, 1873, 1902, 1905, 1911, 1923, 1946, 1948, 1955, 1966, 1976, 1979, 2026, and 2028-2024. Public Rules and Policy Committee, we have ordinance 1956-2024. Zoning Committee, we have rezonings 2079 and 2088-2024. Variances, ordinances 2054, 2076, 2081, 2087, and 2089-2024.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We don't have any speakers on the first reading portion of the agenda, so the following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read those into the record?
Resolutions of Expression, Resolution 188X, 189X, 187X, and 190X-2024. Finance and Governance Committee, we have ordinances 1560, 1757, 1760, 1819, 1830, 1858, 1887, 1898, 1917, 1919, 1932, 1938, 1944, 1983, 2043, 2052, and 2069-2024. Economic Development and Small and Minority Business Committee, we have ordinances 1765, 1816, 1842, and 2083-2024. Public Service and Transportation Committee, we have ordinance 1724, 1729, 1845, 1846, 1848, 1925, 1930, 1949, 1952, 2007, 2025, and 2027-2024. Neighborhoods, Recreation, and Parks Committee, ordinances 922, 1678, 1740, 2085, and 2150-2024. Housing, Homelessness, and Building Committee, we have 1664, 1806, 1874, 1875, 1876, 1880, 1908, 1924, 1929, and 2005-2024. Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee, ordinances 1059, 1928, 1951, 1978, 2029, 2030, 2064, and 2157-2024. Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, ordinances 934, 1669, 1761, 1777, 1909, 2024. Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, ordinances 1574, 1695, 1784, 1832, 1890, 1903, 1969-2024. Rules and Policy, we have appointments from the mayor, A150, 151, 152, 153, and 154-2024.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any questions or comments on the consent portion of the agenda? We do not have any speakers on the consent portion, so if there are no questions or comments, is there a motion to approve? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Day-Ackauer, Dorance Favor, Green, Reemy White, President Hardin.
Consent agenda is passed. We'll now proceed with the second reading of 30-day postponed and emergency legislation. First committee to come before council is the Finance and Governance Committee chaired by Councilmember Bangston. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. First tonight in the Finance and Governance Committee for second reading. We have ordinance 1820-2024 to authorize the expenditure of $3,500,000 from Fund 7733, the Construction Management and Capital Improvements Fund, to pay the Franklin County Board of Commissioners the second and final installment of the purchase price for acquisition of 1410 South High Street. This ordinance authorized the purchase of property for the eventual construction of the new municipal court building. The property located at 1410 South High Street is situated across the street from the existing municipal court building. The purchase contract, which is with the Franklin County Board of Commissioners, has a total purchase price of $7 million, which will be paid in two installments. $3.5 million was paid in 2022, which means this payment represents the final and second installment. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Day-Ackauer, Dorance Favor, Green, Reemy White, President Hardin.
Passed.
Next, we have ordinance 1837-2024 to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to expand funds for the initial term of the Insurance, Brokerage, and Engineering Services contract with USI Insurance Services and for the cost of premiums necessary to bind coverage for the policies selected for the city's insurance program for term commencing August 1, 2024, and terminating July 31, 2025, to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,357,097 and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorized the city to bind coverage for its various insurance needs, including property casualty, boiler and machinery, aviation, and general liability. The insurance coverage is a necessary annual expenditure to protect city assets and is processed through the city's insurance brokerage firm, USI Insurance Services, LLC. These insurance services have been competitively procured and will bind coverage for all city insurance programs for the term, again, August 1, 2024, through July 31, 2025. Seeing no comments or questions from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Day-Ackauer, Dorance Favor, Green, Reemy White, President Hardin.
Passed.
Next, we have ordinance 1931-2024 to authorize the Director of Finance and Management on behalf of the Office of Construction Management to enter into a construction contract with Harold J. Becker Company, Inc., for the roof renovation and replacement 2023 project to authorize a transfer in expenditure up to $5,946,950 within the Construction Management Capital Improvements Fund and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes construction contracts with Harold J. Becker Company for various roof replacements renovations at city facilities across the city. The Department of Finance monitors roof conditions across facilities under its purview and ensures that necessary renovations and replacements are implemented in order to maintain city buildings. The Department of Finance has partnered with the Office of Diversity and Inclusion to place an inclusion goal of 13% on this contract, and registered WBE subcontractor has been selected to help reach in that goal. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing... Oh, Councilmember White.
Just a quick question on the roof replacements. I am just curious if we are considering green roofs in city facilities? Has that been brought to the department's attention as something that we want to consider, given how big roofs are? They could be used for generating renewable energy or even reducing stormwater runoff by having vegetative roofs.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. Deputy Director Chris Long is with us. I'll let him answer. I'll let him answer since I am not the facilities guy myself, per se, but I know he will have yet answered.
Yes, thank you. President Harden, Chair Bangston, and members of council, and thank you for the question, Councilmember Weish. Yes, we are partnering with the Department of Public Utilities, specifically the Office of Sustainability, to identify roofs through the building working group. And so this one doesn't contain dollars specifically for green enhancements, but that doesn't mean other dollars can't be leveraged down the line for those types of sustainable roofing efforts. So happy to answer any questions.
Well, it's perfect. Thank you.
And Director, you mentioned a group that is meeting. Is that something that you want to touch on a little bit, just about all of our facilities and how we're thinking about sustainability moving forward?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Bangston. So within our Office of Sustainability, there's a working group called the Buildings Working Group, which essentially meets with all city departments and divisions that monitor and upkeep all of our city buildings to look at a wide range of green energy efficiency initiatives, whether those would be lighting retrofit, A T F A C retrofits, roof renovations, really anything that can help us be more sustainable, energy efficient. So Department of Finance is part of that working group.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you for that. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remi, Weish, President, Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have ordinance nineteen fifty dash twenty twenty-four to authorize the Director of the Department of Technology to modify and renew an existing contract with V Cloud Tech, Inc., for absolute annual software maintenance and support services for the city's absolute mobility solution and software license to authorize the expenditure of up to eighty-five thousand seven hundred forty-five dollars and four cents for the Department of Technology from the Department of Technology Infrastructure Information Services operating budget and to declare an emergency. This ordinance modifies and renews an existing contract with V Cloud Tech for an annual software maintenance and support services for the city's absolute mobility solution and software licenses. The original one-year contract term from September thirty, twenty twenty-two, to September twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three included two additional one-year renewal options, with this being the second renewal. This contract is being modified by an amount of five thousand two hundred seventy-three dollars and fifty-two cents for additional licenses. An amendment has been submitted to correct the contract date for the renewal, and emergency action is requested to ensure payment for these services can continue to prevent any service interruption. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage. I'm sorry, I move, I first moved to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remi, Weish, President, Harden.
Amended.
And now I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remi, Weish, President, Harden.
Passed.
And next, we have ordinance nineteen eighty-two dash twenty twenty-four to authorize the city auditor to apply for, accept, and enter into an Ohio Water Development Authority Refinance Loan Program loan agreement for the purpose of providing funds to refund certain outstanding special obligations to the city, to designate a dedicated source of repayment for the loan, to authorize an expenditure of two hundred thousand dollars in the sewer operating fund for cost of issuance, and to declare an emergency. In two thousand and fourteen, the city issued two hundred five million four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars in sewerager system revenue refunding bonds to fund efforts necessary to maintain and operate the city's sewage system. It is now advantageous for the city to refinance all or a portion of the outstanding amount of the twenty fourteen sewer revenue bonds, which will reduce the debt service associated with the bonds. In order for the city auditor to apply for and enter into a refinance loan program loan agreement, the Ohio Water Development Authority, O W D A, requires legislation authorizing the city attorney to do so. The O W D A loan administration fee will be rolled into the total loan amount of the loan, and the loan will be paid off from revenues from sewer system rates. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues on this? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remi, Weish, President, Harden.
Passed.
And after reading that piece of legislation, now I see what Councilmember Weish goes through when we talk about different sewages and water bonding. With that, Council President, I move to the Economic Development and Small Minority Business Committee.
Please.
Yeah, thank you. Tonight ends Economic Development and Small Minority Business. We have ordinance eighteen ninety-three dash twenty twenty-four to authorize the city auditor to appropriate funds within the General Fund Income Tax Set Aside Subfund, to authorize the city auditor to transfer three million seven hundred fifty, seven hundred twenty-five thousand one hundred thirty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents within the General Fund to authorize the payment of three million four hundred sixty-two thousand eight hundred thirty-nine dollars and thirty cents to the Columbus City School District, ninety-three thousand seven hundred fifty-seven dollars and six cents to the Gehanna Jefferson City School District, nine hundred fifty thousand two hundred thirty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents to the Columbus Hilliard City School District, forty-one thousand two hundred ninety-two dollars and seventy-one cents to the Hamilton Local School District, two hundred and twenty-four thousand four hundred eighteen hundred dollars and fifty-one cents to the Owen Tangi Local School District, one hundred and forty-nine thousand four hundred thirty-two hundred dollars and eighty-six cents to the Southwestern City School District, and forty-four thousand eight hundred forty-six dollars and fifty-four cents to the Worthington City School District for income tax revenue sharing totaling four million nine hundred sixty-six thousand eight hundred forty-four hundred dollars and seventy-seven cents to authorize the expenditure of four million nine hundred sixty-six thousand eight hundred forty-four dollars and seventy-seven cents from the General Fund and to declare an emergency. This ordinance is our annual revenue sharing payment with various school districts impacted by our property tax abatements. It is standing Columbus policy that we provide annual compensation to school districts for the property tax abatements that we execute within school districts' territory when the annual payroll of new employees in a project is one million dollars or higher. Once this threshold is hit, we must share per our policy fifty percent of the municipal income tax revenue we receive from the payroll of the new employees. When the term of an abatement has ended, the revenue sharing agreement ends, and the school district affected collects their full share of the property tax revenue for the project. This year, there are fifty-two relevant agreements that have led to payments in this legislation. Out of the nearly five million dollars going to seven school districts, Columbus City Schools is receiving seventy percent of this amount, approximately three point five million dollars. Last year's total revenue sharing payments to all school districts was four point two million dollars. This year represents an eighteen percent increase in the amount that we are sharing back with our school districts. This influx of funds for our schools demonstrates the success of our economic development strategy and showcases the safeguards we have in place to protect the interests of our schools in our economic development deals. And before I go further, I just want to say that this is always a balance. When we talk about economic development, it's always a balance of how do we get more revenue? How do we create more jobs? But also balance that with what kind of community are our residents going to be living in? And so in addition to our school sharing revenue, as many folks know, you've heard me talk about this, our school districts continue to receive whatever they were receiving before that property was abated. In addition to that, in many of our economic development deals, they will also receive twenty-five percent of the increase of that property value over the time of the abatement period, and this is the last piece of that. It is revenue sharing. And so when those companies perform well, when they have over a million dollars in income tax revenue, we share fifty percent of that back with our schools. And I'm proud to say that when I look at this number, you continue to see it go up. That's because we have people that are generating jobs and in many cases, outperforming what they said that they would produce. And so this is not simply about money and dollars and cents. This is about people's lives, that people have good-paying jobs, that people have roofs over their head, and they have an opportunity to provide for their families. So with that, before I move for passage, Deputy Director Jones, is there anything that you wanted to add at all? Thank you for that. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remi, Weish, President, Harden.
Passed.
Thank you for that. Next, we have ordinance eighteen ninety-five dash twenty twenty-four to authorize the city auditor to appropriate funds within the General Fund Income Tax Set Aside Subfund, to authorize the city auditor to transfer four million three hundred fifty-three thousand forty-two dollars and seventy-six cents within the General Fund to authorize the payment of five million eight hundred four thousand fifty-seven dollars and one cent in accordance with the Jobs Growth Incentive, J G I, program for the eighteen active reporting J G I agreements for which employers have met the requirements of their J G I agreements and thus are eligible to receive their payments for tax year twenty twenty-three, also calendar year and/or report year in twenty twenty-three, to authorize the expenditure of five million eight hundred four thousand fifty-seven dollars and one cent from the General Fund and to declare an emergency. Just as a quick refresher, the city's Job Growth Incentive or J G I program is an economic development tool, one of many that we have, that gives employers a cash payment up to twenty-five percent of the income tax, of local income tax withholdings for eligible new employees for up to a negotiated term for businesses locating or expanding outside of the Columbus downtown area. This dispersment is made annually, and this year, the legislation provides for five point eight million in J G I payments to eighteen total employers. Four point eight million out of the five point eight million will go to large employers such as Nationwide Children's Hospital and Huntington Banks and others, but the remainder represents smaller payments to midsize employers in various stages of growth. Last year's payment totaled three point two million, and it was with eighteen, sixteen employers who had active J G I agreements. Once again, this increase just represents a growth in the number of residents living and working in the city, which is a testament to our economic development strategy. I think it's also important to point out, and I want to thank the administration, that we now regularly do dual-rate agreements, meaning that we are incentivizing employers not only to move jobs into the city of Columbus, but also to hire Columbus residents. And so you get a higher percentage of that twenty-five percent if you hire residents of the city of Columbus, not just simply folks that just live in the region. Again, this increase shows that we have many jobs that are outperforming what they said they would generate. And so that is something that, again, we like to see in the city because that is, again, food on people's tables, roofs over people's heads, and an ability for folks to live out their best lives here in the city of Columbus. Before I move on, again, Deputy Director Jones, anything you want to add to any of those numbers or anything that I missed?
Thank you, Chair Bangston. As you mentioned earlier, the importance of our partners who are overperforming of these eighteen, we have had five who have actually created more jobs than they originally committed to as part of the incentive agreement.
Thank you for that. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remi, Weish, President, Harden.
Passed.
And lastly, we have ordinance nineteen forty-seven dash twenty twenty-four to authorize the Director of Department of Development to enter into a capital contribution agreement with Deal Development Partnership LLC in an amount up to one million two hundred thousand dollars to reimburse for certain eligible projects, soft and hard costs associated with design, relocation, and construction related to the public infrastructure improvements within the public right-of-way adjacent to a workforce housing project, to authorize the transfer of funds and appropriations within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, to authorize the expenditure of one million two hundred thousand dollars from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, to authorize the Director of Department of Development to enter into a housing development agreement with Deal Development Partnership LLC to provide for workforce housing units and to declare an emergency. As mentioned in the title, this ordinance does authorize a capital contribution agreement to Deal Development Partnerships LLC to reimburse them for public infrastructure improvements that they have done back in August of last year. This ordinance also authorizes a housing development agreement for twenty-two million dollar mixed-use project located at seven hundred East Long Street, the site of the former Deal Whitaker Funeral Home. This project will include forty-six hundred square feet of retail and eighty-nine workforce units of housing. Fifty-one percent of the units are affordable at eighty percent A M I, forty-seven percent of the units are affordable at one hundred percent A M I, and two percent of the units are affordable at a hundred and twenty percent A M I. Emergency designation is requested to allow immediate reimbursement of the utility relocation portion of the public infrastructure improvements. And again, just want to reemphasize that this is reimbursing the developer for doing infrastructure improvements to the public right-of-way, so water and sewer. This is pretty common, and it actually helps save the city money on the front end when the developer is able to go in there and do those necessary improvements. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remi, Weish, President, Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, Council President. That's all I have in my committees this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Barrosa de Padilla. Councilmember DePlur is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Before I read this evening's ordinances, I want to highlight that this evening, four of the six ordinances that will be presented are directly related to safety. These improvements at these specific intersections are a direct result of resident feedback. Through residents' three-one-one requests, testimony at public hearings, and emails to council member offices and our public service offices, your feedback has resulted in improvements at intersections, the installment of sidewalks, shared use paths, repaving and improvement of our city streets. And as council is currently listening to resident feedback during our capital budget hearings, I wanted to highlight these and encourage our residents to continue to advocate for their neighborhoods. We know, especially with roadway projects, because of the cost of them, it takes us a while to get them online. But I wanted to ensure that as I read these, we'll highlight the specific ordinances that are directly related to safety and how some of those ordinances came about. So the first ordinance I have today is seventeen twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, to author the transfer of funds within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, to appropriate funds within the O P W C Grants and Loans Fund and the Federal Transportation Grants Fund, to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Service to enter into contract with the Complete General Construction Company for the Intersection Improvements Cleveland Avenue and Hudson Street Project, to authorize the expenditure of up to four million nine hundred seventy-six thousand seven hundred twenty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents from the O P W C Grants and Loans Fund, the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, and the Federal Transportation Grants Fund for the project, to repay any unused grant funds at the end of the grant period and to declare an emergency. This project includes improvement of Cleveland Avenue from Quora Place to Loretta Avenue and from Hudson Street to Greenwich Street to Linden Avenue. Improvements include widening and resurfacing upgrades, including curb, storm, and sewer, in addition to upgrades to lighting, water, sidewalks, a shared use path, and traffic signals. This is in addition to the improvements that we're making along Hudson, which I know I want to just give thanks to all the folks who travel along that corridor because we've been making improvements for a long time, but just hang in there because it's going to be worth it when all these projects are complete. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remi, Weish, President, Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance seventeen twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four, to authorize the transfer of funds and appropriation within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with Decker Construction Company for the Pedestrian Safety Sidewalk Replacement twenty twenty-four Tree Root Project, to authorize the expenditure of up to one million three hundred twenty-three thousand six hundred seventy-one dollars and seven cents from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. This project will replace public sidewalks, driveway approaches, or driveway approach curbs damaged by city streets at three hundred fifty-five places within the city of Columbus. I wanted to highlight this project because I know that as an unintended consequence sometimes is that we have roots that will grow and disturb the pedestrian ways for our residents and neighborhoods. This is an opportunity for us to correct that, so that will be a removal of trees. But from my understanding from the department, we will be replacing those trees, and we will be making improvements along the sidewalk to ensure that there is a safe and smooth walk, roll, stroll for our residents. I do want to let folks know that there have been some folks who have been on the waiting list for two years for this project, so continue to make those three-one-one calls. We will get to them, but I am excited that at least at three, almost four hundred places, we will be repairing these sidewalks to ensure that our residents, and especially our residents... will be repairing these sidewalks to ensure that our residents and especially our kids have safe walks to schools and safe places to walk as they play and roam around our neighborhoods. So do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akhauer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1746-2024, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a professional services contract with Data Ticket Incorporated relative to the citation processing management system and the permit management system in accordance with sole source provisions of Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,200,000.07 from the Mobility Enterprise Operating Fund to pay for this contract and to declare an emergency. This ordinance is a contract renewal for Data Ticket Incorporated. Data Ticket Incorporated provides parking citation and permit management systems to the city of Columbus. The intent of this legislation is to provide the division of mobility and parking services with additional resources necessary for continued operation. Funding of this ordinance is available in the Mobility Enterprise Operating Fund, meaning that ratepayers or people who park on the street or in city-owned garages are the ones paying in for this contract modification. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akhauer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1835-2024, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with a Rulin Company for the Signals Lockborn Road and O'Betts Road Volta Drive Project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $878.65 from the Street Construction, Maintenance, and Repair Fund for the project and to declare an emergency. This project originated from a 3-1-1 request that led to an investigation study at the intersection. The study found seven angle crashes from 2018 to 2020, with five of those crashes being injury crashes. This project is being completed to improve intersection safety and facilitate safer turning and pedestrian movements. The project includes the installation of a new traffic signal, the construction of sidewalks and curb ramps, storm and sewer improvements, and pavement repairs, resurfacing, and markings. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akhauer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1879-2024, to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Service to enter into a professional services contract with EP Ferris and Associates for the Pedestrian Safety 17th Avenue I-71 to Bilter Boulevard Project, to authorize the expenditure of up of $800,000.07 from the Streets and Highway Bond Fund to pay for this project, to pay for this contract and to declare an emergency. This project will improve a section of 17th Avenue between the Interstate 71 southbound ramp to just west of Pillater Boulevard. Improvements include replacing the existing sidewalk, curb, driveway, ADA curb ramps. 17th Avenue will also be resurfaced during the project. New curb extensions to protect parking, new traffic signals will be installed at the Interstate 71 northbound entrance ramp at Hamilton Avenue and Cleveland Avenue. Any outdated water service lines containing lead or galvanized materials will also be replaced during this project. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akhauer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And lastly, we have ordinance 1885-2024, to authorize the transfer of funds within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with Shelley and Sands Incorporated for the Resurfacing 2024 Project One Project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $16,746,150.74 from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund for the project and to declare an emergency. This contract includes the repair and resurfacing of 97 city streets and constructs 442 ADA ramps along those streets. I believe that we have a visual, which is, this is going to be a not completely satisfactory visual, because I know it's very hard to read, but folks can go. Tomorrow, we will be making an official announcement of the 97 streets that we will be resurfacing. This is one of three phases of a resurfacing project that we will do throughout the year. Part of the reason, again, just for folks' knowledge, that we install ADA curb ramps is that when we do street resurfacing, this gives us the opportunity to address other roadway improvements. So as we're waiting for the backfill of sidewalks, we are installing in ADA ramps. Development is another way for us to put in sidewalks. Other strategies or other ways for us to backfill, we're about 50% sidewalked right now, and so we want to reach 100. So this is part of that strategy. Existing curbs will also be replaced, including ADA ramps where they're being installed. And as I said, tomorrow, folks can visit our website, and you can see the first phase of the resurfacing package. During our budget hearings, we gave a little bit of the why we chose streets. There's a certain grade that each street gets, so stay tuned to see if you're part of one of the resurfacing projects. If there is a street that you see that needs resurfacing that is currently not in one of our packages, please, again, use 3-1-1, because that's how the department reacts and can act to address some of those problematic streets. So with that, do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akhauer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, Council President. That's all for me.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to make a special deviation because we have a special guest with us this evening, and I'm going to skip to the Health and Human Services Committee, Inequity Committee Chair by Councilmember Green. Councilmember LaFleur is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Tonight in our Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee, we have two ordinances on second reading. The first one is ordinance number 1992-2024, to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept an 18-month grant extension from the Ohio Department of Health for the COVID-19 Enhanced Operations Subgrant Program in the amount of $2,715,212 for a new total award of $4,985,505 and a new grant period of August 1, 2023 through December 31 of 2025, to authorize the appropriation of $2,715,212 from the unappropriated balance of the Health Department's Grant Fund, to authorize the expenditure of $2,715,212 from the Health Department Grant Fund and to declare an emergency. The Ohio Department of Health has identified additional funds that may be reallocated to address COVID-19 mitigation activities, including outbreak response, disease mitigation, infection prevention, and control activities, and data modernization, and has awarded Columbus Public Health an 18-month extension from the Ohio Department of Health's COVID-19 Enhanced Operations Subgrant Program. Emergency action is being requested due to the immediate need to avoid forfeiture of this additional grant money and to continue infectious disease monitoring. These additional grant monies will partially cover the cost of 21 grant personnel, fund expansive data modernization efforts for health information systems, and fund new training for CPH staff and local partners to improve local capacity in epidemiology, infection control, data analysis, and data visualization. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akhauer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Pass.
And without further ado, we have our second ordinance this evening, which is ordinance 2084-2024, to authorize the city clerk to enter into a grant agreement with A Kid Again, Inc., to authorize an appropriation and expenditure within the Neighborhood Initiative Subfund and to declare an emergency. And at this time, I would like to pass the floor over to our Council President Harden, who is the sponsor of this ordinance, to speak a little bit more about it.
Thank you, Chair Green. And as I'm speaking and introducing this ordinance, I want to invite our very special guest, our friends with A Kid Again. Today, I'm happy to introduce this ordinance to support this great organization. It's a children's charity here in Columbus that works to do both the impossible and the gravely important, and that is to put a smile on the faces of children with life-threatening conditions. These kids go through something that no human must less, any child should have to do, and giving them the opportunity to go to museums, or zoos, or theme parks, and more, the opportunity that A Kid Again gives to them is the least that we can do as a city. So I'm pleased to invite up and thank, really, the A Kid Again team for, again, providing this service that truthfully no parent wants, but all need, which is to give that respite to our young people, our babies. So thank you and welcome to council.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Council pro Tim Dorans, members of council. My name is Jared Berger, and I'm Executive Director for the A Kid Again Central Ohio Chapter. Approximately 10% of families in the city of Columbus are raising a child with a life-threatening medical condition, according to doctors at Nationwide Children's Hospital. Families in this situation face numerous challenges every day, including social isolation, crippling medical debt, negative and physical health issues, and numerous complications associated with adverse childhood experiences. That's where A Kid Again steps up to the plate. A Kid Again provides adventures for children with life-threatening medical conditions across the city of Columbus, providing families an opportunity to allow their child with a medical condition to experience joy, while also allowing the entire family to come together to experience quality time. To date, A Kid Again serves hundreds of families across the city of Columbus, raising children with life-threatening medical conditions. Because of the investment from the City of Columbus City Council last year, we were able to provide 15 family adventures, saw a 30% increase in enrollment in families across the city of Columbus, and provided nearly 1,500 experiences just to Columbus families. According to research from the Nationwide Children's Hospital Research Institute, A Kid Again programming provides a child's emotional well-being, physical health, and overall quality of life, provides tremendous impacts in all of those facets. Additionally, our programming creates tighter family bonds, decreases family depression, and promotes strong connections with other families in similar situations. Your continued investment in A Kid Again will result in more Columbus families having access to the programming and services we provide. This investment allows us to create lifelong positive memories for child and childhood experiences for Columbus families. Council President Harden, thank you so much for being a champion to A Kid Again families across the city of Columbus. We are thankful for the continued and steadfast support from all members of Columbus City Council. I'm pleased to be joined by Rahel Gabrenza, a Columbus resident, to share the impact of A Kid Again and what A Kid Again has meant for her and her children.
Good evening, President Harden and members of council. Thank you for having me today. My name is Rahel Gabrenza, and I have been living in Columbus since 1981. I'm the proud parent of three minor children, Johanna, Mary, and Adam. Johanna will be turning nine in a few weeks, and the twins are seven years of age. Mary was born with severe global developmental delays. Her medical complexities range from cerebral palsy, hydrocephalus, epilepsy, and a feeding G-tube, to name a few. Her life-threatening illnesses adversely impact her gross and fine motor skills, limiting her ambulatory movements, speech, sensory, and cognitive abilities. Mary's our blessed angel, but allow me to explain why A Kid Again is our angel network. As a resident of Columbus, my family is able to enjoy the benefits of numerous attractions, living amongst a diverse population, and being a part of a unique nonprofit organization like A Kid Again. My family has been enrolled with A Kid Again since 2020, and we have been family ambassadors since 2023. I can personally attest to the fact that they strive to provide, plan, and meticulously organize the highest-quality, fun family experience for all. Due to the gracious donors, we have been able to attend a multitude of local, cost-free events, such as the Columbus Symphony Orchestra, the Ohio History Center, the Contemporary Theater of Ohio, the Columbus Blue Jackets Game, Franklin Park Conservatory, Close Eye, and many more. These collective memorable adventures have afforded my family the opportunity to enhance our social, emotional, and physical well-being. My children and I are happier. We smile and laugh more, temporarily forget about our worries, spend more time with each other outdoors, walking in the sunshine, networking with other families, and forging meaningful relationships with dedicated staff members. A Kid Again is an unparalleled program that embodies hope, happiness, and healing year round. They have fostered a creative atmosphere, and families have found connections to help them through their daily challenges. Thank you for supporting A Kid Again and its invaluable service to our special needs community for families raising a child with medical complexities. Thank you.
And we're honored to partner with Kid Again and to be, again, support, to be there for families like yours. We're grateful that we could come beside you in support the way that you do. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Councilmember, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you so much, and I also would just like to echo the thanks for all of the incredible work that you do in the community and the way that you just really lift up families and kids, especially people that are experiencing hardship at a time when they really need that support and love the most. So we are so grateful, and we're honored to be able to support you. Do any of our other colleagues have any comments or questions? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akhauer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you so much, Council President. That's all I have.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm going to pull one more audible, so the clerk's team can kill me. I'm going to go to the Rules and Reference Committee. I chair that committee, but I'm going to turn the floor over to Councilmember Favor. Or somebody. Or Dorans. Rob.
I think you're looking for me.
They're really going to kill me. Go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. As you were saying, we'll go to Rules and Reference, where I have two pieces of legislation here tonight. We have ordinance 1995-2024, to an Act, Chapter 4517, the Columbus City Codes, to create a vacant building registry. This legislation creates a vacant building registry as a piece of council's Housing for All legislative package that has been championed and led by our Housing Chair, Councilmember Favor. This registry will give the Department of Building Zoning Services the ability to keep up-to-date contact information on owners of vacant residential property and assist with our code enforcement team to make sure that these properties are meeting our code. This legislation works to meet that owners meet minimum standards of maintenance of their properties and to ensure that, again, here at the city, that as we're facing a housing crisis, that we're ensuring that neighborhoods are not met with additional challenges while vacant properties exist in their neighborhoods. We want to see those vacant properties be turned back into productive housing units and allow families to call them home. We do have one speaker on this piece of legislation, so with that, I'd like to invite Mr. Nate Wilkins to the podium.
1612 Arlington Avenue, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins. Before I say something, I'm going to give a little testimonial here. This should have been done before I even bought my house on Arlington Avenue. And because of this, I chose that neighborhood several reasons, other vacant and abandonment home. The first home I looked at was 1639 Arlington Avenue, and it was this home, something I fell in love with. It was a four-bedroom house, was built in 1910. The square foot was 17,000 square feet. Due to E.M. Spylock at the Attorney's Office and Richard C. Pfeiffer, trying to look for the property owner. At that time, I drove with my relative, and we looked at this house, a diamond in the rough. Yes, I would propose a registration form. When I went back to my relative, this is what we saw. As I drove with my relative, I looked at the whole area, unique property, vacant and historical homes, wasn't up for sale, torn up and disrepaired. I looked at Myrtle Avenue. Myrtle Avenue was a ghost town, a rough neighborhood that the city didn't know about, 1592 or Myrtle Avenue. This is what I saw. No for sale sign, no vacant notice. I saw notices on the door. As Genesee Avenue probably set vacant and abandonment, this is what I saw. Properties that sit like this with a vacant sign notice. And I had to ask myself, who owns this mess? And I had to ask myself, who owns this mess? Who owned these properties? None of these properties was turned around. They all came demolition for Habitat Humanity. And today, I still stand here, I don't have my four-bedroom house. And because I wanted that particular house, I went to a real estate auction for 1639 Arlington Avenue, sat there, and somebody bought the house for 8,000, decided not, didn't want it at that time. I looked at it, me and my wife looked at it, and I talked to the contractor, it came for demolition. That's when my heart broke. I chose that neighborhood because it needed a voice for a house, a certain between, a certain house on that block that I fell in love. Today, it's no longer there, and all I seen was nothing but Habitat houses coming in here, that's all I ever seen. Let me just say in closing, this particular house, 1495 Arlington Avenue, Habitat wants to buy and put the two family dwellers over there. I said no, because we don't have no, any other house that stood here 100 years ago. I chose that neighborhood for one reason only, to have a voice. Thank you for my time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. And as always, council appreciates your advocacy on these housing pieces of legislation. Do want to pause and see if any of my council colleagues have any questions or comments at this time in this space. Councilmember Favor.
Thank you, President Pro Tim Dorans, for your leadership. I also want to extend my appreciation to Nia Walters, who's with our Legislative Research Office, as well as to Director Messer and his team, who were instrumental in getting this legislation together. The vacant and foreclosure registries are critical in ensuring that housing units in our community do not sit around and deteriorate. As important as building more units and addressing the housing shortage, so is the preservation of existing units, and the registries get to the heart of that. With the passage of these policies, we have now passed seven of council's 12-piece housing policy package that we announced last March. I look forward to continuing to partner together as we pass the rest of these policies. And once again, thank you, President Pro Tim, and your team for really spearheading this effort.
Thank you, Chair Favor. Any other question or comments from councilmembers? Again, just want to echo the thanks that Councilmember Favor mentioned of the number of departments and individuals that worked on this piece of legislation. This seems like a very simple topic, but as we dug in more and more, there was lots of different wrinkles and things to address with many different stakeholders, both internally at the city and externally. And I would certainly be remiss if I didn't thank Andy McDonald from my staff, who was the driving force on my team to bring us here tonight. So, with that, unless there's any other questions or comments, I move for passage.
Amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry. First move to amend as amended, the clerk.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla de Akauer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy, White, President Harden.
Amended.
And next, a move for passage as amended.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla de Akauer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy, White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1997-2024 to enact Chapter 4519 of the Columbus City Codes to create a foreclosure property registry. This legislation creates a foreclosure property registry as, again, a piece of council's Housing For All package that we've discussed here this evening. This registry will create a mechanism to help protect neighborhoods from becoming bloodied through the adequate maintenance of foreclosed properties. We know that when properties enter foreclosure, oftentimes there's an absentee ownership throughout that court process, so it's very, very important for our code team through the Department of Building Zoning Service to be aware of those. But at the same time, for us to be able to work with our neighbors within those areas and identify whether or not we're seeing significant foreclosures within individual neighborhoods in Columbus for us as a city to continue to support those residents, to make sure that we're keeping people in their housing. Do any colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Nope.
As I'm, sorry. First, I move to amend as amended, the clerk. Thank you, clerk.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla de Akauer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy, White, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you. And now I move for passage as amended.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla de Akauer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy, White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, Council President. That's all I have in rules and references at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is there motion to recess for zoning? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla de Akauer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remy, White, President Harden.
We are in recess.
Sorry, Councilmember.
Favor?
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer Dorans, favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First, a bit of housekeeping from last meeting. Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the Journal from 6/24/2024?
So moved.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer Dorans, favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
All right. And are there any additions or corrections to the Journal? Hearing no additions or corrections, the Journal from 6/24/2024 is approved. All right. Now, can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the Journal for the 7/1 2024 meeting?
So moved.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer Dorans, favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the Journal? Hearing none, the Journal is approved from 7/1 2024. We'll now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Dorans chairs that committee. All members serve one. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Before we begin tonight's zoning agenda, first a little bit of housekeeping. Will the clerk please read the numbers of legislation in the zoning committee this evening that require waiver of second reading?
Rezonings, ordinance 1937, 1972, 2006, and 2009-2024. Variances, ordinance number 1659, 1935, 1936, 1939, 1973, 2002, 2003, 2004, and 2010-2024.
Thank you, Clerk. I now move to waive second reading on those items right of lab.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer Dorans, favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Waived.
Thank you. Now, allow me to briefly explain our current rules pertaining to speaking before council on rezonings and variances. We only hear a staff presentation of ordinance that have a disapproval from a recommending body, or if we have a public speaker assigned to speak against an ordinance. We permit three speakers on each side of an ordinance, three proponents, three opponents. We ask that speakers, please limit their remarks to three minutes per the standard rules of City Council. Only those who own property with 125 feet, that is, subject to variance requests, are legally able to make public comments on a council variance pursuant to legal advice from the City Attorney's Office. All speakers on council variances, including city staff, area commissioners, applicants, and members of the public, will be sworn in before they give testimony. Representatives in area commission are always able to speak in an ordinance and do not need to fill out a speaker slip. But we do ask that you alert city staff of your intentions to speak before the committee. We have one public speaker slip this evening, in addition to two area commissioners from the North Central Area Commission tonight. On the advice of the City Attorney's Office, I will now swear in city staff. Please stand and raise your right hand and be sworn in. You swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, nothing but the truth, as you shall answer to pains and penalty of perjury, so please say "I do."
I do.
Thank you. Please let the record reflect that Tim Dietrich from the Department of Building and Zoning Services, Christopher Lor from the Division of Planning, Daniel Blushman from the Division of Traffic Management, Deputy Director of Housing Strategies in the Department of Development, Aaron Prosser, and Tony Sella Breezy from the Department of Building and Zoning Services have been sworn in. Our first piece of legislation tonight is ordinance 1937-2024 to rezone 1598-1614 Greenway Avenue, being .41-plus acres located in the north side of Greenway Avenue, 370-plus feet of Taylor Avenue from R3 Residential District to AR2 Apartment Residential District. The site consists of five undeveloped parcels, and the proposed rezoning will allow a multi-unit residential development on the site. A concurrent council variance is further down our agenda tonight and includes a variance to building and parking setback lines, side yard setbacks, and required parking spaces for an 18-unit apartment building. The proposal is approved from city staff, the Development Commission, and the Near East Side Area Commission. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer Dorans, favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1972-2024 to rezone 740 North Wilson Road, being 14.36-plus acres on the east side of North Wilson Road, 505-plus feet north of Fisher Road, from CPD Commercial Plan Development District to LM Limited Manufacturing District. Site consists of six parcels, two of which are developed with former dwellings converted to commercial uses, and industrial building which was intended for a fuel sale/convenience store and future office development. The requested rezoning will allow commercial unlimited less objectionable manufacturing uses to be developed. The proposal has approvals from city staff, the Development Commission, and the Greater Hilltop Area Commission. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer Dorans, favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 2006-2024 to rezone 6085 Winchester Pike, being 18.84-plus acres located on the south side of Winchester Pike, 1,100 east feet of Jenna Road, from LC4 Limited Commercial and CPD Commercial Plan Development Districts to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. Site consists of one undeveloped parcel, and requesting the rezoning would facilitate the site's development for commercial purposes, including a retail fuels facility. Proposal is approved from city staff, Development Commission, and Greater Southeast Area Commission. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to amend as submitted to clerk.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer Dorans, favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you. Now, move for passage as amended.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer Dorans, favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 2009-2024 to rezone 4480 DeSantis Court, being 3.33-plus acres located in the southwest corner of DeSantis Court and West Henderson Road, from LC4 Limited Commercial District to ARO Apartment Office District. At the request of the applicant, I move to postpone this ordinance to our council meeting on September 9, 2024.
Is there a second? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer Dorans, favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Postpone.
Thank you. Next, moving to council variances portion of our agenda. First, we have variance 1659-2024 to granted variance provisions of section 333-2.035 R3 Residential District, 333-2.05A4 Area District Lot With Requirements, 333-2.13 R3 Area District Requirements, and 333-2.21 Building Lines. Columbus City Code should properly locate it at 1286 Key West Avenue to allow a two-unit dwelling with reduced standards in the R3 Residential District. The site consists of an undeveloped parcel, and the requested rezoning would allow for a two-unit dwelling. That applicant proposes a future lot split and requests a council variance to allow two-unit dwelling on each lot. A council variance is required because the current zoning district does not allow two-unit dwellings. The proposal duplex will be affordable at the 80% area median income level, which is equal to $55,000 annual salary for an individual, or about $79,000 a year for a family of four. Occupation that fall within that salary range in Columbus could be teachers, unit construction workers, registered nurses, entry-level police and firefighters at the city. The proposal has approvals from city staff, but received a disapproval from the North Central Area Commission. Due to that disapproval, we will not hear a staff presentation before we hear from the applicant and the public speaker signed up to speak on this ordinance. First, we'll have Mr. Tim Dietrich from the Department of Building and Zoning Services. Mr. Dietrich, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon, Chair Dorans, President Harden, members of council. The site consists of an undeveloped parcel in the R3 Residential District. The applicant proposes a council variance to allow a two-unit dwelling on each lot due to a future lot split. A council variance is required because the R3 District does not allow two-unit dwellings. Variances to lot width, lot size, and building lines are also included in this request. The site is located within the planning boundaries of the North Central Plan, which recommends single-family residential uses at this location. Staff supports the request as the proposed two-unit dwellings are consistent with the existing housing types and the plan's recommendation for infill housing on vacant lots within residential areas, and therefore we recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Dietrich. Any questions or comments from council members? Seeing none. The next speaker we have is from the Division of Planning, Mr. Christopher Lor. Mr. Lor, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden, Chair Dorans, and members of council. The Planning Division supports the applicant's variance requests to allow for a duplex in the R3 District, Area District Lot With Requirements, and R3 Area District Requirements. Though the proposed duplexes exceed the North Central Plan's recommendations for single-family housing in this area, staff notes the design to be consistent with the North Central Plan's housing objective, which recommends the provision of a variety of housing opportunities, as well as support for the development of housing for all economic levels within North Central. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lor. The next speaker is Mr. Dan Blushman from the Traffic Management Division. Mr. Blushman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Dorans, President Harden, members of council. The applicant addressed an initial comment from the Division of Traffic Management and modified the proposed parking area to remove the need for variance to Division Clearance Triangle requirements. All driveways for the site are proposed to access the alley serving the rear side of the property. Therefore, the Division of Traffic Management has no further comments on this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blushman. Any question or comments from council members? Seeing none. Last city representative here this evening with us is Mr. Aaron Prosser. Ms. Prosser, the floor is yours.
Chair Dorans, President Harden, members of council. The proposed rezoning at 1286 Key West Avenue in North Central Neighborhood supports the Columbus Housing Strategy by building new housing, which will diversify the type of housing offered and include affordability in a changing area. The proposed housing meets two out of the four pillars of the housing strategy. The first is build. Home prices in this census tract rose 27% from 2020 to 2022, with just a 1.3% vacancy rate. In that same time, the rent rose 30% and has a 0% vacancy rate. This indicates a high demand in the area in need of additional housing to slow the growth in housing cost. In 2022, 35% of the households in the census tract paid more than 30% of their income on their housing expenses, indicating that there is already a strain on many families to maintain their current housing expenses, given the market. In this census tract, only 125 homes were built between 2010 and 2022. In that same time, in the city of Columbus, 54,865 homes were built. The second pillar is include. Diversifying the housing types available in all neighborhoods ensures continued economic diversity in housing to meet families at all stages. Currently, 85% of the housing in this census tract is single-family detached housing, and only 6.5% of the housing is a two-family dwelling. Adding gentle density like duplexes is an opportunity to increase housing available without changing the character of the residential neighborhood. It also expands who can build homes in our community to include small and emerging developers. Finally, adding affordability to the community as housing prices rise, with a median household income currently at $35,000 annually, which is 50% of the area median income, will mean that there are more opportunities for neighbors to stay in the community as the area continues to see rising housing prices.
Thank you, Ms. Prosser. Any questions, council members, for Ms. Prosser at this time? Seeing none, I would invite the applicant for Mr. Stifis Pearson. Mr. Pearson, welcome back to council, sir.
Yes, I'd just like to state on behalf of TPT Developments that this project is just a continuing effort and a much-needed to address the housing shortage taking place within the city of Columbus. The project is sensible, keeps the integrity of the neighborhood, taking what was once a blotted lot, and doing very, you know, unique and sensible development there.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Any questions for council members for the applicant at this time? Seeing none. Mr. Pearson, I may invite you up after we hear from the public speakers. Great, thank you. As I mentioned earlier, we have two area commissioners who signed up to speak on the ordinance and one additional public speaker. The first speaker to come before council is Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Williams, welcome back to council.
Good evening, everyone.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Williams, I have to swear you in. You swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, nothing but the truth, as you shall answer to pains and penalty of perjury? If so, please say "I do."
I do.
Thank you. And I'm gonna, actually, I have to call back up Mr. Pearson after you, because I forgot to swear him in. So, sorry about that. We're gonna have you go, then I'm gonna call him back up. We're just changing the order a little bit, so...
Do you want me to go last?
No, no, no.
Because I have a community also that wants to speak.
Yep, we'll have you go now.
Okay. So, in regards to this particular property on Key West, with them wanting to construct a duplex on it, the area Key West as a whole has 24 potential additional houses that's going to be built on that street, all of which will be single-family homes that will be committed to be built by HomePort between Key West and Puritan. So it does not fit the aesthetic of the community. But in addition to it being a duplex in itself, we've had issues with Mr. Pearson as a property owner, as he owns a property on Sigsbee. And his tenant had sent a very long, detailed email, as well as pictures of the property, of it not being maintained to the point in which she was forced to relocate and leave that property. And I have forwarded the pictures to Kevin McCain regarding that resident and tenant. But he is in contract to purchase the lot on Key West and potentially build a duplex. The pictures that I have provided, which is very concerning as a resident, because I don't think that this is the type of developer that we need if we're in our community, because he has not maintained the existing property that he currently has. The basement in that particular property was flooded. She had children and had to relocate, and she was also a new individual to Columbus. So she stayed in that property because she did not have nowhere else to really go. And I'm just summarizing, because I know we're on a time shortage. But if we're truly looking to construct affordable housing, based off of the amount of rent that this particular duplex would be, it already exceeds all of the mortgages in American Edition, including it will exceed the HomePort purchase price as well. So I don't think if it's going to be affordable, it needs to truly be affordable for our residents. As it's just the purchase price, as well as just maintaining the property. We've already seen what he has done with his existing property. So even if we were going to have a developer, I just don't think that he would be a good fit for our community. And it's also very disheartening, considering that he came through the emerging developer program, because I would think that we would want better for our future residents. And I do have the pictures that I can display if you'd like to see what 1275 Sigsbee looked like. It was deplorable. I would not put anyone in that home, not even in unhoused. It was deplorable. And so, if we are going to have someone additionally develop in our community, I just don't think Mr. Pearson is the developer for our neighborhood. We want quality housing. We're not adverse to having new people move in. We've been working with HomePort to develop this community. And then, if we start putting in duplexes, again, it does not fit. We do not have any duplexes within American Edition as a whole, though we do have renters. So we do have a few people that rent, and we're not, it's not like we don't want renters to have a place to be within our community. But I do think that if we add this duplex, again, there's no apartments, no townhouses or flats in American Edition, so it does not match the aesthetic as a whole, nor does it champion Mayor Coleman's promise and commitment to our community for a completed neighborhood. I think that if we approve this project, it's really setting a precedent that will leave our community barren for revitalization, and we're trying to build our community up. So I just think that this particular project is not good fit for American Edition, and this revitalization will be very futile if we were allowed this project, especially with this particular developer. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it. Any questions or comments from council members for Commissioner Williams?
Can we have any questions?
Seeing none. I'm gonna call the next area commissioner, Mr. Hooper. Welcome back to council, sir. And Mr. Hooper, I'm gonna swear you in real quick when you get to the podium, though I trust you. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, nothing but the truth, as you shall answer to pains and penalty of perjury? If so, please say "I do."
I do.
The floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, council. Council President Harding, Bangston, and other councilmen. I'm coming before council about this developer. American Edition, as you know, was one of our 100-year-old neighborhoods. You all have pumped millions of dollars to make this neighborhood what it is today. I mean, Mayor Coleman's promise was, he took the junkyard neighborhood and made it livable. It is a beautiful sight over it. I want to thank all of you all for bringing it back into the real age. But this developer, and I know we need housing, and I know council passes all of these ordinances, because we are in a housing crisis. Columbus needs housing. Columbus needs housing. HomePort had made a commitment to continue President Mayor Coleman's commitment, but this developer, I'm just asking council, let's make sure these developers straighten out the issues of concerns with their properties. We have spent thousands of dollars, Colonial Village, Latitude 25. They have to make the commitment of straightening out issues with their properties, like 1775. This lady was standing in a flooded property. This developer is telling you, he got 80 properties with only eight people to maintain them when he came before our North Central. This guy, this company is not keeping the commitment of making affordable, safe houses for our families. We need to hold them accountable. We need to look at this 1275 and see have he made all of the corrections of the violations. We deserve our kids and families deserve to live in safe properties. If you go over American Edition, you will see all these beautiful homes. We're not denying him or anybody else to put up affordable, safe homes, that he's gonna be committed about keeping his standards up the way we want Columbus standards to be. And I'm asking all these councilmen, let's hold these developers accountable. Look at those pictures of this dilapidated home against all of these new homes that it took 15 years to, 20 years to develop. Is he making the same commitment by his 1275? Let's have somebody look at this 1275, you straighten that out, and then you come back to council and tell us what you want to build. Make it real. That's all I'm asking, and thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Hooper. Next speaker to come for council is Ms. Lisa G. Brown. Ms. Brown? And I will swear you in when you get to the podium. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give, "Shove it the truth, nothing but the truth, as you shall answer pains and penalty of perjury"? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Floor is yours, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Lisa G. Brown, and I am a fourth generation of American Edition. My great-grandmother helped settle it. So, I'm gonna read the letter from Marie, who lived at 1275 on Six B. The home was cosmetically cleaned up by the inner works of the home, but needed some work. But she was desperate, so they took the home with hopes that things would be okay, as if anything was wrong. She said the first issue was the heating system. There were some things overlooked, like the basement when she moved in, because the access is on the outside of the home. She said they looked down there, but not thoroughly. She said when she finally went down, and she seen a mess of black trash bags, as if they were connecting the ducts for the ventilation system. Some weren't even connected. So, she knew right away there was no heat coming into the home. She said she advised Cephas, and he later sent someone to fix the ducts, but a few vents weren't pushing heat out. And she was told that they would have to do something extra to put the heat to push out through, but Cephas wasn't willing to. His words was, wasn't warm. She said, he said, mind you, it's the middle of January, January 22, as a matter of fact. He's fully clothed, walking through the house. She said my response was that he is not in the home, doesn't live in, so how would he know what the temperature is and what the people were hired clearly advised of him, what needed to be done? She said it took him until the end of March to fix the heat. It was only after she reported into housing, and he failed another inspection, and they forced him to fix it, or he wouldn't receive rent payment, wouldn't receive wood payment until it was fixed. She said she put in several requests around the home, and he does not, and he does the bare minimum. She said either he tries to fix things on his own as a handyman, never a professional. She said she know cutting costs in some areas is needed, but if you get into a business just as corners, it's never gonna work right, right? She said the next major incident was the sump pump in the basement. It would come loose in the flood, the entire basement, and he would just send a handyman over to tape it up or tighten it again. One of the guys he sent said the sump pump needed to be replaced, but that never happened the entire time she lived on a property. The house is still flooding in the basement and underneath the deck. The pipes he had running through the front yard was caused puddles throughout the yard and into the front sidewalk. She complained about it, and he then had to move the pipe under the deck, flew out to the fence, to have it flew out to the fence line, but it was just all flooding under the house instead. She said the vents don't drain, the water was so, it sits at the bottom of the stairs of the basement. The last time it was, for me, due to the smell, and this was one of the reasons why they failed the inspection. She said it smelled horrible. Their son, the son, Darius, placed the dehumidifier on the ground of the basement and tried to explain to her that it was going to suck up the water. I told him that was the dehumidifier, and it doesn't have a vacuum, it's going to be damaged on the ground. He proceeded, and I left it alone. The interactions she had, communicating with Cephas and his team, had been horrible, from him being rude, unprofessional, just as nasty about things, as he had left a bad taste in her mouth. There's always this stigma in renters, but who's checking for these property owners? She said the issues with the heat, weather stripping around the doors, cracked stairs, the roots under the deck, causing the deck gate to fall off, yard cleanup, the deck boards, and nails, and sump pump, mold mildew smell, unfinished cabinets, unfinished closets, baseboards not connecting to the floor, no vent under the dryer hookup. She said for me, I don't understand why he would want to keep building more properties when you haven't made sure the ones that you have are up to standards. She said I'm really pushing to get this done. There is so much more I want to say, but I think at my point, I hope this helps. She sent the letter to me, helping us to let them know about Cephas and his properties. The thing is, anyone can flip a house, she said, but if you say you're trying to build affordable homes, then have some type of standards, not just the bare minimum. At least care about your own properties. She said as far as she is concerned, the rent he's charging is more than the sum of the half of people in the neighborhood, which, as Maris stated, is more than their mortgages, $1170. Then he raised the rent to $1,250, as it is right now, she says. She was pressing to her security deposit, and she may have to take them to court, because he was refusing to acknowledge her 30-day notice to move, which she sent a certified mail to the address. He's claiming he didn't send it, but she said she has all her proof. It was signed, they received it, a copy of the letter and the envelope, the receipt with a certified mail, an informed delivery, information for tracking. So, I said all that to let you guys know. In a nutshell, he's kind of a slumlord. He looks good. He looks good on paper, but I live in American Edition. I knew Marie. It's just having doubles is not aesthetically to the neighborhood. Like she said, HomePort is building single-family homes, homes that people can afford, not rent. So, that's it. Any questions?
Just to be clear, then.
Yes.
If it was not this developer, and somebody else proposed a duplex, it'd be approved?
No, if he had this property, no.
If it was not him, and somebody else proposed a duplex, would it be approved?
No.
So, you just don't want the duplex?
No, it's not. If he had this property, is that what you're asking, about the duplex?
If there was another developer.
Okay.
Who proposed the same project, would the commission approve it?
No.
So, then it's the duplex?
That developer would own this. Okay.
So, a completely different developer.
Okay.
Who has a great track record.
Mm-hmm.
Proposes the same project, is it getting approved?
No, because we don't want doubles. We want single-family homes. It's not aesthetically to the neighborhood.
So, then the issue of the developer's past behavior is really kind of irrelevant?
No.
Okay.
That's why I read it. I don't think it's irrelevant. It just adds to it.
Any other questions or comments from council members at this time? Councilmember Faver.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding, though, because, and I appreciate all three of you coming down to offer testimony this evening, but everyone has stressed the condition of the property that the developer before us tonight, how he has elected to maintain those properties. So, what you are affirming, though, is that it doesn't matter how he has maintained those properties, that the project itself would still be a no, in your opinion?
Yes, because we don't, like I said, it's a single-family home area, not duplexes.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other question or comments? Councilmember Bangston?
Just to clarify, because I keep hearing different addresses. Which address are we talking about here? Sorry, which address are we talking about?
Oh, well, this is just a tenant that he had on 1275 Six B.
1275, okay.
Yes.
I just keep, I heard 17, and I'm just gonna make sure I add the right address.
Oh, no, that's somewhere else.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, this is on Six B. This is one of his tenants. But if he does build, you may see the same thing.
Thank you. Before I ask the applicant to come back up to respond, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Rosa Deputia. Oh, we will get there in just a moment. So, Chief Counsel, I'm sorry. Councilmember Faver.
Chair, if you don't mind, I'd actually pose the same exact question to the other two commissioners, who have also spent a decent amount of time down here at council, advocating on behalf of their community. So, the same exact question, if it was a different developer, one who...
Councilmember, I'm gonna invite them up, just so they're on the record.
Please.
So, if Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Hooper, if you wouldn't mind coming back to the podium, Councilmember Faver has a question. I just want to make sure that's captured on the record for the meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Dorrance. My question, as you are coming back up to the podium, that if we were talking about a different developer, one who was a, quote, "good neighbor" to this community, would the project still be declined? Or is your opinion based upon past behavior?
Due to council's past consistency of passing affordable housing, I feel at this time, for as I'm concerned, if we could get a developer that got our commission, our neighborhood's best interest in building doubles that look like the houses that's there already, that the city have pumped millions of dollars in infrastructure in, I think it would be a consideration, because we know council's gonna pass them. I know we are in a housing crisis, but we don't want the developers to take the advantage of the housing crisis. We don't want another colonial village. We would like to have, if you gotta go with doubles, to make it livable for all of the people that need houses, I would suggest we compromise. We compromise, yes, we want a very nice developer that's building houses that's gonna be nice to our families and everything. I think affordable housing at this time should reach out to all types, because that's what the sign is telling us. We got to compromise. Columbus needs all these houses, but we want developers that ain't a colonial village type of developer. They build these houses and go on to the next neighborhood. We don't need that anymore. We pumped too many, too much money into finding affordable houses when they run down. We don't need developers like Mr. Pearson. We need developers that, when they go in American Edition, they see what they are looking at. And for as I'm concerned, we got to get ready to compromise. We don't have a choice. We don't have a choice. We need housing.
Thank you.
For doubles that look like our regular single houses, I suggest we take that initiative.
Thank you.
As a commissioner for American Edition, and just the residents of that community as a whole, they do not want duplexes, to be clear. But the, just off of the, what we've seen in the pictures of the property that he's already maintaining, for certain, we do not want him to be a developer within our community. And furthermore, to me, it's almost a black eye to your Emerging Developers Program, because if we're getting new people in here to help them build their inventory with city stock, and this is what they're doing to existing properties and future potential residents, like, that's heartbreaking, especially for a person who's not even from here. Like you said, over 40 people a day are moving to Columbus, and what would their interpretation be of our city if the first place they stop is a property like what he already has existing?
Thank you.
But I also understand that, again, we do, we may have to make a compromise, but, because we do need housing, but with literally every single house on both sides of the street of Key West, for those, excuse me, for those two blocks are gonna be single-family homes, if it was to be a duplex added, it would need to look like a single-family home so that it merge, so that it looks aesthetically pleasing.
Got it.
But from the residents and how they've reached out to me, and cons emailed, called, text messaged me regarding this project, they, as a whole, they do not want single, they do not want duplexes.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. Councilmember Rosa Deputia. Commissioners, if you wouldn't mind, Councilmember Rosa Deputia.
Just for further, and for my own understanding, aside from a duplex looking, like, if it's into the neighborhood, the aesthetics of the neighborhood, why in particular not a duplex?
Well, particularly on that particular piece of property, it already doesn't meet the size requirements for the single-family home, so it's already not enough space on that lot. The lot that's right next to it, Shalana's property, is a lot and a half. So, then to put a duplex on that little corner, it does not match, because most of those houses on that particular block is a lot and a half, so they have additional space.
I guess my question is, what you affirmatively said was, we do not want duplexes in our neighborhood. I guess my question is, why do you not want duplexes? What's, if it is a family who is gonna live there, if there are people who are gonna live there, what's the difference if they live in a single-family home versus a duplex? I guess I'm just trying to understand the thinking.
For me, for me personally, it was aesthetics, the way it looked. Now, if it was a single-family home, because there was a project that I believe, was it in Shepherd, that was done?
Mm-hmm.
And it was beautifully done project, where it, the duplex home, it looks like single-family homes. It fit the neighborhood. But again, you want it to be able to match the community. Also, you think about people who would potentially want to sell their homes. If every single house for two city blocks, or even the whole community as a whole is a single-family home, and then you live next to that duplex, I think that would be an issue for your property value as well, to be honest.
One thing I will say, I mean, I am not a city planner, but I live in, I am surrounded by duplexes. I am surrounded by apartments, large apartment complexes. And I'm just saying this for the good of the order, because I know at other times, we have had residents who have come in who have said, who wants to live by apartments? I have lived almost the entirety of my existence on the East Side by apartments. If you know anything about the East Side, then you know there's large apartment complexes, and there are double, or there's duplexes, and there are condominiums. And I can tell you that even looking at the property value, not just of my home, but of the same home that my mother has lived in for 50 years, it continues to go up because of our lack of housing stock. So, that's just a quick side note, but I just, I think, thank you. I just want to understand further, when we're talking about the diversification of our housing stock, and we're talking about a duplex versus a single-family home, you know, the aesthetics is one thing. We would all want our neighborhood to look a specific way, but I think as we're thinking about ensuring that we can house more people and house them at different price points, then I think to the point that you were making, Mr. Hooper, about compromise, I just wanted to understand the thinking of folks in the neighborhood of saying, we don't want a duplex, when you know that you could fit, potentially, more folks would have the opportunity to live in your neighborhood and experience all the good things that you experience in your neighborhood, but be able to be, to afford it. And we know we can house more people when we, when we think about housing differently, and not just a single family, because either people wouldn't be able to afford it, or it's just not going to do the job in terms of ensuring that everyone has a safe, affordable neighborhood that they can live in, so.
I can definitely appreciate that, but another thing is, when this community was being developed, when HomePort was shopping these homes to us, we were told that we were gonna get 125 homes, single-family homes. So, a lot of us purchased our homes with the intent, with the intention of it was going to be a single-family home community. That's what we brought into. So, I think that's also a big thing, because if, honestly, if these homes were developed when they were supposed to be, this wouldn't even be a conversation. Also, one of the big things that I would like to see some of these developers do, you know, everybody's doing single, you know, doing duplexes, but we're only doing three bedrooms. What about the families that have six-plus kids, or multiple children? Where are we gonna see the four-bedroom homes, or four-bedroom, you know, units? Because from what I've been told, I have yet to meet the new neighbors, but there's like six kids living in another property now. So, where are we gonna properly have space for larger families? I think we need to start having that conversation as well. And when it comes to affordability, is it, I mean, yes, the rent is getting pretty insane in Columbus, and I know with the new housing, we're trying to modify that, but as a native New Yorker, I'm telling you right now, with us doing more, quote, "affordable housing", it's truly not affordable to our residents. It's based off of the area median income, and we know most of our residents make under $50,000. So, still, our people who make $15 to $20 an hour, our school employees will still be homeless, or have to have roommates. So, that's a conversation we need to address as well, if we're talking about true affordability, because again, we're at people who make it $50,000, $60,000. because, again, we're at people who make it $50,000, $60,000, and plenty of our city and state workers make 40 or less.
And Chair, I know we want to move forward, and we want to ask the applicant some questions. The one other thing I would just say, I would offer up is that I think it's not just about developers not wanting to have three- and four-bedroom units, it's about also communities not wanting those because many times we will have folks who push back on us on decisions that we're making on certain developments that have more capacity within that. So, I mean, this is an ongoing conversation that we can have, and I think, you know, it's challenging because we're all being met with a lot of change all at one time. But I think that, you know, this is where that compromise comes into play, right? Because I think it's also when folks come down and they're pushing against having more people or having that density in their communities, it puts us all in a tough spot when we have to make decisions. So thank you again for your advocacy, and thank you for coming down.
Yep. Thank you, Commissioners. I do want to invite the applicant back to the podium, but, and when he gets up here, I'm going to swear him in really quick. And then I'm actually going to have the city attorney speak to a number of issues regarding what is actually before council as it relates to a variance request. So first, if you wouldn't mind, let me swear you in.
Yes.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give and have already given? Is the truth, nothing but the truth as you shall answer to pains and penalty of perjury? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you. And I wanted to ask Chief Counsel Laura Baker-Morris from the City Attorney's Office. So this is a variance request. So this is not a rezoning in which council can make any decision based upon its policy prerogatives. We are operating in a different capacity as it relates to a variance request, and I wanted to ask this to the Attorney's Office to give sort of a baseline description of what that means for this body reviewing the evidence that's before it, and as it potentially relates to some of the testimony that we've heard from QME members tonight.
Thank you, Chair Dorrance. So in this particular case, what council has before it, it is a request for a series of variances of two different types. The first thing is the applicant is requesting a use variance, and that is specific request that this particular area, which has been zoned residential, be allowed for a two-unit, a duplex, as everyone's been referring to it here this evening. In determining whether or not a use variance would be appropriate, that is the higher standard for the applicant to first meet, and council needs to be considering whether or not the applicant has demonstrated an undue hardship. An undue hardship is described under the city code as whether or not such use will not adversely affect the surrounding property or surrounding neighborhood, and if council is satisfied that the granting of such a variance will alleviate some hardship or difficulty which warrants a variance from the comprehensive plan, then and only then do you move on to the requests for area variances that are accompanying that request for a use variance. So in other words, first, the applicant must demonstrate some undue hardship, and if council believes that there is an undue hardship with the use of that particular space or that particular land under the existing zoning code, the existing, in this case, the residential district that it is currently zoned for, then you move on to question number two. And question number two is whether or not the area variances that are being requested, which in this case, I believe are with requirement and the building lines in this particular circumstance. And so then, when you go on to consider those area variances, then you refer to what's commonly known as the Duncan standards, which is a Supreme Court case, but that's neither here nor there. And that's where the applicant has to demonstrate whether or not there are unusual and practical difficulties that exist due to an irregular shape of lot, topography, or other conditions. And then there's a number of factors that council can consider in determining whether or not that particular standard has been met. And those factors, those seven factors are the quote-unquote Duncan standards that you might hear discussed when people are talking about variances. This is all different than when you're considering a rezoning, which is not at issue here. A rezoning is a legislative act, but a request for a use variance is closer in the sense that you are determining whether or not to deviate from an existing, underlying zoning, but its standards are higher than you would have if it was a request for a rezoning. And then if you agree to that, then you move on to the area variances. Does that answer your question, Chair Dorrance?
It does. And to ask a follow-up, so specifically, when we're talking about what is considered before the body right now, is testimony about another property that an applicant owns, the condition of the rents of it, et cetera, is that relevant evidence to be considered by this body for purposes of a variance?
Evidence along those lines would only be relevant if it was specifically relevant to the parcel at issue. So the question, if the individual who was putting forth a plan or an application for an area variance and for a use variance, and that property were abutting the property at issue, then it might be relevant. But the mere fact that the owner has other properties in existence that he maintains or does not maintain in any particular way is not relevant to the question of whether or not this particular property can be used in a particular way. Of course, the character of anybody who testifies is always relevant in terms of it going to credibility, but it's not relevant in terms of making your decision as to whether or not we've demonstrated a hardship and/or the Duncan factors if we get on to the area variance question.
Thank you. And again, another follow-up question to, just a, we've heard a number of testimony, I think, from QME members about a variety of different issues as it relates to this application, one of which is just generally directed towards, "We don't like this particular type of housing type," whether folks agree or disagree with that. Is that particularly, is that a piece of evidence necessarily as we consider those factors on whether or not a variance exists?
The question of whether or not aesthetically or it is desirable or not is not going to be relevant. Questions of whether or not it fits or doesn't fit within the comprehensive plan can be relevant, or questions relating to what the shape of this particular lot might be, might be relevant, but questions of aesthetics are not what are being considered here when we're talking about whether or not to grant first the use variance and then an area variance if you meet the standard for the use.
Thank you, Chief Counsel. I think Councilmember Brosa, Deputy has a question. Do you have for Chief Counsel?
Yeah. So if we change the, again, for the, for this variance, if we change what the land use is, that carries over to the land regardless of who the applicant is. Is that correct or no?
It's specific to the application that's before you, but yes, whether or not, if you make a determination that the application before you, and I mean, but the plans, the plans before you, are justified based upon whatever the applicant has put forth as evidence to support that change, then yes, that would change the use of the underlying land and would change the permissible uses of that particular parcel in that, despite its zoning.
Regardless of owner?
Regardless of owner.
Do other council members have questions for Chief Counsel Baker-Morris at this point before I ask the applicant to speak? See you, Nun. Mr. Pearson, the floor is yours to speak to either public comment that we've heard or any other issues you'd like to testify to.
First, I'd like to recognize the neighbors and the commissioner of the neighborhood and the American Edition. I understand that with growth and development, there can be anxiety, but I just, standing in this forum, I want to let them know that I want to be a good steward to the American Edition and be someone that, and a developer that continues with the path that we've heard about with the history of, you know, American Edition. It's one of the reasons why I'm excited about the potential of being able to develop there. Just because it is on record, there are a few things that I would like to address. In regards to the property 1275 6B, I'm proud of that property. That was a property that sat in that neighborhood for probably seven or more years, dilapidated. We went in, we renovated the property. As it was stated, we had a tenant there, I believe for a little, almost two years, a Section 8 tenant, which means that we underwent an inspection no less than once a year, meaning we passed that, those inspections. And, you know, not saying there was never any issue, but nothing to the, you know, my 20-plus years of being a landlord, preserving property, building property, I've never been referred to as some of the things that I've heard this evening. So that's a little disheartening. In regards, I also heard the gentleman state, "We don't want another colonial village," which is, was interesting to me or a driving point to me because as a developer, as a landlord, I was one of the preferred landlords that the relocation specialists reached out to because of my track record, when they were trying to place tenants from Colonial Village, to not only go speak to prospective tenants, but also meet with caseworkers and educate them on standards and how they can help increase, you know, the chances of potential tenants getting into homes. It was also brought up, you know, regarding the emerging developers' program, which I'm proud to have been a part of, which I just want to say, I'm, you know, proud of that program. I'm an excellent steward of the program. So I just didn't want the record to only have that one, you know, side of that, that, you know, we've done, we've already begun developing and doing great work within the city of Columbus, things that have been featured in Business First. So it's just, there are a lot of excellent things surrounding myself and my development team that I just feel like I would be doing myself and them a disservice if I didn't say that here at council today. So, you know, my entire career has been in the affordable housing space, and I'm proud of that record.
Questions by council members to the applicant at this time?
Yes.
Councilmember Favor.
So we understand there's always two sides to every story, and so, you know, while we understand that the law may constrain our decision at the end of the day for this specific variance, I think it is incredibly important, though, to demonstrate being a good neighbor.
Absolutely.
And the fact that, should this piece of legislation pass, and you want to continue to conduct business in the city of Columbus, that we also have very long memories. And so if this is, I think I want to hear a response. I do, I want to hear a response to what has been provided here tonight, absent the fact that we know that it does not constrain, that the law does constrain what we are, what we do need to make a decision on tonight. But I don't think I can in good conscience move forward without hearing something
Okay.
From you. Respectfully, yes.
Respectfully to the neighbors and to council, prior to me submitting my application for these duplexes, I never heard anything from any neighbor regarding these units or the unit on 1275. It was at, at the council meeting that that unit was brought up, and you know, I did try to, you know, provide a level of explanation that, you know, it may be a disgruntled tenant, but the two things aren't aligning. This is not a dilapidated property, far from it. Heating and, you know, there, those are things that would be, how I tried to explain, those would be things that are co-violations. And an emergency co-vibration to that, there would be a long record. If what they described to you today was accurate, there would be a long record on file where you would be able to look it up. So just respectfully, there's just not a lot for me to explain there because there's just not a lot there. I just, prior to the submission of the duplex, we just didn't have these overwhelming concerns about 1275 6B Avenue. In fact, a lot of the neighbors complimented, thanked me when we, you know, fixed the property up. So I just think it is a, one of those growth and anxiety things where we need an argument to go against this project here.
Thank you, Chair.
Councilmember White.
So Juan, have you renovated other properties outside of 1275?
Have, yes.
And how many properties do you own or manage?
To date, close to 80 units.
Were any of the units built from the ground up?
Yes.
Or they were just, so they have been built from the ground up, similar to this project, correct?
Not, I mean, not similar in design. It was a ramp, but...
So you talked about renovating a dilapidated property?
Correct.
Has that been the normal practice for you?
Absolutely.
Okay. And so in this case, there is no property on this site, correct? And so you're building it?
Oh, yeah. This is vacant land, correct?
Gotcha.
Yes. And I'm glad you asked that question. Prior to new construction and development, my career was built on, you know, the preservation of property in Columbus, which we have an awesome track record with.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Other questions or comments from council members? Councilmember Favor.
Just a comment in general. I have, I've literally been on record all day today talking about our housing crisis, and hopefully, in the next few minutes, we will pass what will be a relocation code that will help individuals who have been displaced because of the inaction by landlords for failing to keep their, the property in a safe, inhabitable way. And so this conversation cannot be lost on me, that we have members of the community coming out, who come quite often to council to advocate on behalf of their community. And while our views may differ as to what is the solution to solving our housing crisis, it can't be just approve any and everything. And so what I'm saying to you, as a person who has been a staunch advocate for more housing and diverse housing in our community, and then especially as someone who has supported the Affordable Housing Trust and specifically the Emerging Developers Program, it is incredibly important for us to do everything that we can to make sure that we are doing exactly what we said we were going to do, which is to deliver safe and affordable housing and providing equitable ways in doing that. But that's also ensuring that the end product does exactly what it needs to do as well. And so I will reiterate the fact that hopefully, this is not the last time that you come before this body, but that there are long memories and that there are things that you have to do along the way in order to continue to be a successful developer in this community. And so I understand that there are two sides to every story. I heard what you had to say. I heard the advocacy from the community, understanding that we need to continue to build in our community. But I am asking you to work alongside the members of this community and to address whatever issues may not have anything to do with this project along, may not have anything to do with this project that is here before us today, but nevertheless, if you want to keep doing work in this community, it would behoove you not to repair relations or do whatever you need to do to resolve that other situation, but more importantly, to make sure that this project is successful at the end of the day.
And that's, I'm, thank you for reiterating that. And that's why I began by thanking the community because it is my goal to work alongside of the community. I don't want to be a thorn to the community. I want to be a help to the community. And hold me to that. I love the long memory because I believe that will weigh in my favor. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember Favor. Any other council members? So I know the QME members that are here, it's not a satisfying thing to hear that many of the concerns you have are not legally relevant for what is before this body here. And I understand that's a frustrating thing, but that is not necessarily what comes before council as it relates to a variance request. The issues that were discussed here tonight by QME members, the first time that they made their way to my office, Kevin McCain from my office has engaged with the Air Commission Chair, and these issues were, had not been brought up in those discussions. That said, I'm supportive of these variances. I understand the concerns that folks have, and I want to be very, very clear that we need all types of housing across Columbus, but also they need to meet the legal scrutiny as they move through this process. There's other issues we've discussed here this evening as it relates to this particular applicant. I'm going to table this piece of legislation for one week in order for us to be able to work with the QME members, the applicant, just to make sure that everyone is on the same page. But I also want to be very, very, very clear that I believe the staff report identifies the hardships that are necessary to grant this variance, and I am personally supportive of those. But I do think it's important, and I believe this applicant is genuine in the sense of wanting to meaningfully engage with folks, and I think we can do that in a week and then bring this piece of legislation back before this body for a vote. So I would ask, I would ask the folks who spoke here tonight and the applicant in my office to work together with us next week, get to the bottom of the story. But again, I want to be very, very, very clear, both the applicant and the QME members, when we talk about what is presented within this variance application, I think it meets the legal standard for us to come before the body. I am personally supportive of that. And again, the testimony that was shared tonight, important community feedback, and I understand it's frustrating to hear that some of that feedback is not legally relevant to what we're voting on here today, but that's the process as it relates to variances. So with that, I'm So with that, I'm going to move to table this piece of legislation until our meeting on July 22nd.
Mr. Chikney, postpone.
I'm sorry. I moved to postpone this piece of legisla-- clerk saving me all the time. I moved to postpone this legislation into our next council meeting on July 22nd.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Postponed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance number 1828-2024 to amend ordinance number 2216-2020, passed October 12th, 2020, for property located at 2546 Delta Road to repeal Section 1 and replace it with a new Section 1 to the correct building setback ordinance for existing apartment complex. Ordinance number 2216-2020 passed October 12th, 2020 allowed a 480-unit apartment complex with reduced development standards in the property located at 2546 Delta Road. The ordinance included variance, variances of maneuvering, parking spaces, ARLD area requirements, building and parking setback lines, required parking in primary yard. The building setback variances included a reduction from 25 feet to 10 feet for detached garages in the eastern property line along Interstate 270. A site survey shows that some of the detached garages actually have a minimum setback of 9.7 feet, not 10. The ordinance amended Section 1 of ordinance number 2216-2020 to correct the building setback discrepancy and reflect the resulting 9.7 feet building setback line along the eastern property line. The ordinance also removes variances that are no longer necessity, necessary due to code change that allow a multi-unit residential development comprised of parcels with different taxing districts to span parcel lines. No other aspects of ordinance number 2216-2020 are changing with this amendment. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Amended.
Accepted.
Accepted.
Thank you. Um, next I move to adopt the fines of staffs, the fines of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Uh, next I move to amend to emergency.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Amended.
And finally, a move for passage as amended.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1829-2024 to amend ordinance number 3140-2021, passed December 6th, 2021, for a property located at 2600 Delta Road to repeal Section 1 and replace it with a new Section 1 to correct building setback variance for existing apartment complex. Similar to the previous ordinance, this amendment updates the previously passed council variance, accurately reflecting the building setbacks to 9.7 feet rather than 10. Again, no other aspect of the previous ordinance is changing with this amendment. Proposal has approval from city staff and the Northeast Area Commission. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for, move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Accepted.
Thank you. Next move to adopt the fines of staffs, the fines of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you. I'm next move to amend to emergency.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Amended.
And finally, a move for passage as amended.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1935-2024 to grant variance provisions of Section 3332.035, R3 Residential District 3312.27, parking setback line 3332.05A4, area district lot with requirements 3332.13, R3 area district requirements, and 3332.22A1, building lines on corner lots, exceptions to Columbus City Codes, for property located at 2585 Osceola Avenue to allow two-unit dwelling with reduced development standards in the R3 residential district. Site consists of one undeveloped parcel, and the requested council variance will allow two-unit dwelling to be constructed on site. A council variance is required because the current district allows only single-unit dwellings. The proposal has cities, the proposal has approval from city staff and the North Linden Area Commission. I first move to accept the staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Accepted.
Thank you. Next, I move to adopt the fines of staffs, the fines of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you. And I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1936-2024 to grant variance provisions of Section 3332.035, R3 Residential District 3312.49C, required parking 3332.05A4, area district lot with requirements 3332.13, R3 area district requirements 3332.21, building lines 3332.19, fronting 3332.27, rear yard of the Columbus City Codes, for property located at 1555 East Weber Avenue to allow two-unit dwelling on one lot with reduced development standards in the R3 residential district. Again, same as the previous ordinance, this site consists of one undeveloped parcel, and the requested council variance will allow healthy homes to construct a two-single-unit dwelling on one lot. It's approved by city staff and the North Linden Area Commission. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Accepted.
Thank you. Next move to adopt the fines of staffs, the fines of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you. And finally, move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1939-2024 to grant variance provisions of Section 3312.21A, landscaping 3312.49, required parking 3333.18, building lines 3333.22, minimum, maximum side yard required, and 3333.23, minimum side yard permitted, and 3333.25, rear yard, obstruction of the Columbus City Codes, for property located at 1598-1614, Greenway Avenue, to allow reduced development standards for apartment building in the AR2 Apartment Residential District. This is a concurrent variance, the first item from our agenda earlier tonight. Proposal includes an apartment building with total 18 units, and the variance has reduced the building setback and parking, side yards and parking spaces. Proposal has approval from city staff and the Near East Area Commission. First, I move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Accepted.
Thank you. Next move to adopt the fines of staffs, the fines of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you. Finally, move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1973-2024 to grant variance provisions of Section 3332.039, R4 Residential District 3312.49, required parking the Columbus City Codes, for the property located at 1137 Lanwood Avenue, to allow a type A childcare home with reduced to, reduced parking in the R4 residential district. The site consists of one parcel developed with a single-unit dwelling. A council variance is required because the current district does not allow a type A childcare facility. Staff has no objection to the requested type A childcare home, which must comply with Ohio revised code requirements and be inspected by the state of Ohio. Proposal has approval from city staff and the South Side Area Commission. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Accepted.
Thank you. Next move to adopt the fines of staffs, the fines of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you. Now move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 2002-2024 to grant variance provisions of Section 3356.03, C4 permitted uses 3312.274, parking setback line in 3356.114, C4 district setback lines of Columbus City Codes, for property located at 1423-1425 Briarwood Avenue to allow a two-unit dwelling with reduced development standards in the C4 commercial district. This is the third healthy homes proposal on our agenda this evening, similar to the previous ordinances. The site consists of one undeveloped parcel, and the requested council variance will allow healthy homes to construct a two-unit dwelling on the lot. Proposal has approval from city staff and the North Linden Area Commission. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Accepted.
Thank you. Next move to adopt the fines of staffs, the fines of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you. And finally, move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 2003-2024, our grant, to grant variance provisions of Section 3332.035, R3 Residential District 3332.05A4, area district lot with requirements, and 3332.13, R3 area district requirements, the Columbus City Codes, for property located at 1142-1144, 20th Avenue, to allow two-unit dwelling with reduced development standards in the R3 residential district. This is our fourth healthy homes proposal on tonight's agenda, very similar to the ones we had earlier. Again, approved by city staff and the South Linden Area Commission on this one. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Accepted.
Thank you. Next move to adopt the fines of staffs, the fines of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer, Doran's, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Adopted.
Uh, I next move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 2004-2024 to grant variance provisions of Section 3332.035, R3 Residential District 3332.05A4, area district lot with requirements, and 3332.13, R3 area district requirements, the Columbus City Codes, for property located at 2464-2464 Azalea Street, to allow two-unit dwelling with reduced development standards in the R3 residential district. Again, this is a healthy homes project, same variances that we've heard on the other projects. Again, approved by city staff and the North Linden Area Commission. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Accepted.
Next, I move to adopt the fines of staffs, the fines of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you. And finally, move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Finally, we have ordinance 2010-2024 to grant variance provisions of Section 3312.27, parking setback line 3333.18, building lines, and 3333.255, primary yard, the Columbus City Codes, for property located at 4480 DeSantis Court, to allow reduced development standards for apartment complex, the ARO Apartment Office District. At the request of this applicant, I move to postpone this ordinance to the council meeting on September 9th, 2024.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Postponed.
Thank you, Councilmembers, all we have tonight's zoning agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Seeing no further business, come to the zoning committee. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Is there a second? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla de Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy White, President Harden.
Zoning is adjourned. Zoning is adjourned.[172.73]
Consequences and really provide a safety net and accountability for all people in our communities and to ensure that our families are protected, to ensure that we, again, that if they were putting people on notice, that really the business of Columbus is about investing in our people and moving our people forward. And so I'm excited about what these changes look like. And I think just thank you for your leadership and thank you for, you know, ensuring that we really showed our values with the legislation that we're putting forward, especially with all of the conversations that we have around zoning that the public doesn't always get to see, right? But I think that they see where our heads are at, they see what we value when we put pieces of legislation forward like this. So, thank you. And again, thank you to the department. Also, Hannah Jones, I was saying earlier in a meeting, if you could have clocked out what your 2021, 22, 23, 24 looked like, it was probably a big learning curve. And I just want to commend the work that you've done to really show intention and understand what some of the barriers are for our community members, especially when I think about our immigrant migrant refugee communities who have such a short time period to get back on their feet and are facing incredible obstacles. And so that's incredibly important as we talk about the pressure on the system overall. But as we plan, are intentional about how we circumvent some of those issues as we look at our this incredible growth that we're facing. So, thank you again.
Absolutely. And thank you, Councilmember Barosa de Padilla, for elevating that. You know, when I think about what a comprehensive housing initiative really looks like, it's not just about putting shovels in the ground, it's about preserving what's already been built. It's also about implementing those robust tenant protections. This is a part of that effort, the city's effort, the administration, as well as the city council, ensuring that we're doing everything that we can to provide housing for all residents in the city of Columbus. You all are an incredibly big part of that. So, thank you for working with us into the city attorney's office as well. With that, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you so much. Council President, may I move back to housing homelessness and building?
Sure.
Thank you. First, we have ordinance 1877-2024 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a contract in an amount up to $1.2 million with Black Bronco Construction LLC to provide residential lead safe abatement services as part of the Division of Housing's Lead Safe Home Renovations Program, to authorize the expenditure of $1.2 million from the general government grant fund, and to declare an emergency. The Lead Safe Ohio Funding operated by the city's Housing Division allows Lead Safe Home renovations. The primary goal of establishing funding is to assist low and moderate income owners with primary prevention and to reduce immediate and presumed lead hazards in residential properties built before 1978. Awarded contractors will perform the Lead Safe renovations such as, but not limited to, roof replacements, installation of gutters, downspouts, repair of porch structure, and more. Emergency action is requested to continue performing the needed services for residents as quickly as possible and to comply with the terms of the grant from the state of Ohio. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1959-2024 to authorize, let me back up just for one moment. As the city continues to address our region's housing crisis, we must focus on building more housing and increasing our housing stock. In 2022, Columbus voters passed a $200 million bond package for affordable housing. Tonight, we have eight ordinances for housing projects across our city utilizing those bond dollars. In total, the city is committing over $18.5 million, bringing 708 affordable units to our community, the first of which, 1959-2024. To authorize the city auditor to transfer funds within the Affordable Housing Bond Fund. To authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a grant agreement with National Church Residences in an amount up to $1.7 million in support of the Bretton Woods Phase II development. To authorize the expenditure of up to $1.7 million from the Affordable Housing Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. National Church Residences proposes the new construction of Bretton Woods Phase II, the 60-unit second phase of senior housing community with onsite supportive services located on Cleveland Avenue. The senior housing community will offer 60 one-bedroom units with 24 units affordable to residents at or below 50% of the area median income and 36 units affordable to residents at 60% of the area median income. Emergency action is requested in order to maintain the construction schedule and to fulfill financing needs prior to closing deadlines with the developer's other lenders. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1960-2024 to authorize the city auditor to transfer funds within the Affordable Housing Bond Fund. To authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a grant agreement with Healthy Linden Homes III LLC in an amount up to $5 million in support of the development of 23 units of new construction rental and rehab housing. To authorize the expenditure of $5 million from the Affordable Housing Bond Fund. To authorize the reimbursement of expenditures incurred prior to the establishment of a purchase order and to declare an emergency. Healthy Homes is an affordable housing developer focused on increasing the stock of high-quality housing options available to families earning no more than 80% of the area median income in Linden. This project will develop 23 units of new construction rental and rehab housing in zip code 43211. These properties will consist of infill development designed to replace residential structures that have been demolished. In addition to high-quality affordable places to call home, the tenant families who will reside in these units will have access to a variety of supportive services and advocacy opportunities. Emergency action is requested in order to maintain the project's schedule and to fulfill the financial needs to mitigate additional fees from lenders. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1961-2024 to authorize the city auditor to transfer funds within the Affordable Housing Bond Fund. To authorize the Director of Department of Development to enter into a grant agreement with Hudson Investment Fund V LLC in an amount up to $1,250,000 in support of the Market Mohawk Apartments LLC. To authorize the expenditure of $1,250,000 from the Affordable Housing Bond Fund. To authorize the reimbursement of expenditures incurred prior to the establishment of a purchase order and to declare an emergency. The Market Mohawk Apartments involves the acquisition and redevelopment of 94 units at 399 South Grand Avenue in Columbus, Ohio. Pursuant to the acquisition, a land use restrictive agreement was recorded ensuring that 70% of the rental units are limited to a maximum of 80% of the area median income. 30% of the rental units are limited to a maximum of 60% of the area median income. And any rent increases to current residents are limited to a maximum of 4% per year. Emergency action is requested in order to maintain the construction schedule and to fulfill financing needs prior to closing deadlines with the developer's other lenders. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1962-2024 to authorize the city auditor to transfer funds within the Affordable Housing Bond Fund. To authorize the Director of Development to enter into a grant agreement with Hudson Investment Fund V LLC in an amount up to $1.1 million 250,000 in support of the Topiary Park Apartments LLC project. To authorize the expenditure of up to $1,250,000 from the Affordable Housing Bond Fund. To authorize the reimbursement of expenditures incurred prior to the establishment of a purchase order and to declare an emergency. The Topiary Park Apartment Projects involves the acquisition and redevelopment of scattered site portfolio that consists of 163 apartment units across four sites in downtown Columbus. Pursuant to the acquisition, a land use restrictive agreement was recorded ensuring that 40% of the rental units are limited to a maximum of 80% of the area median income and 60% of the units are limited to a maximum of 60% of the area median income. And any rent increases to current residents are limited to a maximum of 4% per year. Emergency action is requested in order to maintain the construction schedule and to fulfill financing needs prior to closing deadlines. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1963-2024 to authorize the city auditor to transfer funds within the Affordable Housing Bond Fund. To authorize the Director of Department of Development to enter into a grant agreement with NCJC Housing and Development Foundation for the NCJC Downtown Campus Project in an amount up to $3,875,000. To authorize the expenditure of $3,875,000 from the Affordable Housing Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. NCJC Downtown Campus is a proposed affordable housing tax credit development with a total of 120 units of housing over a pad with parking and commercial space located at 266 East Main Street. The project will serve families with 58 one-bedroom units, 48 two-bedroom units, and 14 three-bedroom units. The rents will be affordable to families at or below 30 to 80% of the Franklin County AMI. 24 units will be set aside at 30% of AMI rent, which could potentially serve individuals that income qualify but currently reside in local shelters. Social service coordination will be provided to the residents by NCJC Housing and Development through partnership with local area providers. Emergency action is requested in order to maintain the construction schedule and to fulfill financing needs prior to closing deadlines. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1964-2024 to authorize the transfer of funds within the Affordable Housing Bond Fund. To authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a grant agreement with Erie Ohio Capital CDFI Fund LLC to provide funding for the Broadley Lofts Apartment Housing Project. To authorize the expenditure of $2 million from the Affordable Housing Bond Fund. To authorize the reimbursement of expenditures incurred prior to the establishment of a purchase order and to declare an emergency. Broadley Lofts property will be mixed income, featuring affordable housing ranging from 30% of the area median income up to 80% of the area median income, accommodating various household sizes including one, two, and three-bedroom units. The proposed development will total 84 units with at least 20% of units set aside as integrated supportive housing for homeless veterans due to close proximity to the VA and the remaining units targeting general occupancy. WODA will be partnering with Columbus Metropolitan Housing Authority on this endeavor to provide 29 project-based vouchers and coordinate the necessary supportive services for the target population. Emergency action is requested in order to maintain the construction schedule and to fulfill financing needs prior to closing deadlines. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 1965-2024 to authorize the city auditor to transfer funds within the Affordable Housing Bond Fund. To authorize the Director of the Development to enter into a grant agreement with Erie Ohio Capital CDFI Fund LLC in an amount up to $1,896,402 in support of the Granville Woods Loft II Affordable Housing Development. To authorize the expenditure of $1,896,402 from the Affordable Housing Bond Fund. To authorize the reimbursement of expenditures incurred prior to the establishment of a purchase order and to declare an emergency. Granville Woods Loft II is a proposed 118-unit mixed-use affordable housing development consisting of two phases located on the edge of the Driving Park neighborhood. Granville Woods Loft II will target households with incomes at 30% to 80% of their area median gross income and will include six one-bedroom units, 43 two-bedroom units, and 11 three-bedroom units for a total of 60 units. Emergency action is requested in order to maintain the construction schedule and to fulfill financing needs prior to closing deadlines. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And last but certainly not least, we have ordinance 1985-2024 to authorize the city auditor to transfer funds within the Affordable Housing Bond Fund. To authorize the Director of Department of Development to enter into a grant agreement with Columbus Metropolitan Housing Authority for the renovation of Country Ridge property in an amount up to $2 million. To authorize the transfer in expenditure of up to $2 million from the Affordable Housing Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. County Ridge is currently an affordable housing community consisting of 96 units with a 50-unit project-based voucher contract that is owned by Columbus Metropolitan Housing Authority. The project consists of 48 two-bedroom units and 48 three-bedroom units. Renovations to Country Ridge will include new kitchen and baths, flooring, appliances, HVAC, water heaters, window treatments, siding, windows, and roofs. All residents will have access to CMHA's RISE Center, which helps residents coordinate access to supportive services in the following four areas: economic empowerment, educational advancement, health and wellness, and character and leadership. Emergency action is requested in order to maintain the construction schedule and to fulfill financing needs prior to closing deadlines with the developer's other lenders. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Councilmember Bangston.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to say very quickly, because I think sometimes the hour is late and we skirt past these things, but literally what you just brought forward were tenant protections for some of our most vulnerable residents, setting a tone for landlords. We literally just passed, and with this, $18.9 million to preserve housing and to build more affordable housing. And I often say to folks all the time, what is the point of growing if that growth doesn't help our current residents? And so I hope that folks look at tonight's agenda, and particularly, I'm talking to all of the folks that work here in this building and work across this city, that oftentimes, we pass these big things, we do this big stuff, and we don't take the time to really think about what we're doing. We are setting the stage for the growth that is coming. And so that cannot be missed tonight. And so I just want to take just that little bit of time, I know it's late, but thank you, Councilmember Favor, for being a champion, a continued champion for affordable housing, and for the working people of this community. We need housing at all price points, that is true. We need to get more deeply subsidized housing, that is absolutely true. But also, who is being squeezed is that single mom who has two kids who's making $50,000 or $60,000 a year but has nowhere to call home. And so because of tonight, we're making a small dent in that. And so I just want to make sure that's not missed on all of us that work in this building every day behind the scenes to get these types of big things done. So, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Councilmember Bangston. And I'd love to just take this opportunity once again to thank Mayor Ginther, thank Director Stevens, and the entire development team for all of the work that you all have done to bring these projects online. You know, part of the mayor's vision for the state of the city really is around prioritizing housing. And I think tonight, we demonstrated our commitment to ensuring that we are providing housing for all residents in our community. So, thank you all for continuing to be a partner. Thank you to my colleagues for supporting tonight's legislation. And with that, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. That is all I have in my committees.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In an attempt to get us back on track and for the clerk's office not to try to fire all of council, we will go back to the order that we should be in. And the next committee to come before council is the Neighborhoods Recreation and Parts Committee.
Oh, wow, it's finally my turn!
chaired by Councilmember De Akauer.
I'm just keeping everyone's finger pointed. Thank you, President Harden. I have just one ordinance in my committee this evening. Hallelujah. Ordinance 1367-2024 to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into a guaranteed maximum reimbursement agreement with Nationwide Realty Investors Limited for the Sensenbrenner Park Plaza Improvements Project. To waive the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Code. To authorize a transfer of $300,902 within the Recreation Parks Voted Bond Fund. To authorize amendment of the 2023 improvements budget. And to authorize expenditure of $600,992 from the Recreation Parks Voted Bond Fund. The Columbus Recreation Parks Department has owned Sensenbrenner Park since 1974, and has since developed it into a pocket park for those working, playing, and living in the downtown area. The park underwent minor renovations in 1998, 2009, and in 2011. This ordinance will authorize the Recreation Parks Department to enter into an agreement with the NRI for repurposing this fountain space and making other needed renovations to the Park Plaza. It has been determined that it will not be feasible to keep the fountain in operation as the underground infrastructure is in need of replacement and the associated costs are exorbitant. The partnership with NRI has been longstanding, including previous agreements in 1994 and 2015. This project is a continuation in demonstrating the partnership breadth and the overall benefits that the partnership has to the entire community. Without NRI working to identify contractors and manage this project, the renovations would not be feasible at this time due to CPRD's project capacity. In addition to managing the project, NRI will initially pay all costs up to $600,992. Reimbursement amounts will be adjusted to match project hard costs. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
That's all for me.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Workforce Education Labor Committee chaired by Councilmember Doran.
Thank you, Council President. We have ordinance 1778-2024 to authorize the Director of Human Resources to enter into a contract with Baker Tilly US LLP to provide consultative services for a total compensation study. To authorize expenditure of $56,448.75 from the general fund. To waive the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Codes and declare an emergency. In 2023, the Human Resources Department and Office of Compensation Management went out to bid for a consultation service to assist with a total compensation study. Consultant services are needed by the Department of Human Resources to ensure internal alignment of city Columbus pay and jobs to determine how the city's current total compensation package might be updated to maintain competitiveness with comparable entities in both public and private sectors and draw on a shared labor market. After careful consideration and valuation, the RFP team selected Baker Tilly US LLP for the firm's reference project, experience, qualifications, availability, timeline, and project approach. Delays in preparing the total compensation study may result in further personnel attrition negatively impacting the city of Columbus. Therefore, emergency action has been requested. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, Council President. That's all I have in my committees this evening.
Thank you, Press Protiem. The next committee to come before council is the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee chaired by Councilmember Remy. Councilmember Flores, yours.
That's me. All right. I've got a few to get through tonight, so let's get started. First ordinance is 1788-2024 to authorize the Director of Public Safety on behalf of the Division of Police to enter into contract with Proto Inc. for the continuation of towing management services. To authorize an expenditure of $1,203,222 from the general fund. The Division of Police is responsible for the safety and welfare of the traveling public on all public streets, state routes, interstates, and waterways, as well as those endangered by parking violations, accidents, or abandoned vehicles and watercrafts within the metropolitan Columbus area, as well as on city-owned land. In an effort to improve the transportation network and access innovative technology, the city sought a smart solution to towing management services. Four proposals were received by the bid. Closing date of April 4, 2024, and the evaluation committee determined that Proto Inc. was the highest qualified bidder. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Next is 1918-2024 to authorize and direct the mayor of the city of Columbus on behalf of the Department of Public Safety, Division of Police, to accept the fiscal year 23 Sexual Assault Kit Funding Grant Program award from the state of Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services. To authorize an appropriation of $350,000 from the unappropriated balance of the general government grant fund 2022/20. To authorize the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into a $350,000 contract with the Attorney General's Office BCI for specific laboratory services related to sexual assault cases. To waive the competitive bidding provisions of Chapter 329 of the Columbus City Codes and to declare an emergency. The Columbus Division of Police was awarded funding through the fiscal year 23 Sexual Assault Kit Funding Grant Program through the state of Ohio of Criminal Justice Services. The city must be a subgrantee of the state of Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services to participate in this program according to the federal guidelines. Therefore, the mayor is required to sign a subgrantee award to accept the grant on behalf of the city. This federally supported program seeks to reimburse state and/or local law enforcement to conduct investigations on the sexual assault kit testing and related expenses. Deputy Director Hollering, could you speak to the waiver of competitive bidding, please?
Thank you, Chair Remy, members of council. The crime lab currently has a backlog in sexual assault kits to process. Crime lab has reached out to other crime labs and agencies to see if any could process these. The BCI was the only agency that had the capacity to take on more cases.
Thank you very much, Deputy Director. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Thanks. Next is an ordinance 1927-2024 to authorize and direct the city of Columbus Director of Finance and Management to enter into contract with Leeds Precision Instruments Inc. for the purchase of Leeds LCF III Comparison Microscope for the Division of Police in accordance with the bid waiver provisions of the Columbus City Code. To authorize the expenditure of $90,703 from the general government grant fund and to declare an emergency. The Division of Police Crime Lab was awarded federal grant 2022 ARLB 907A. The grant is to be used to purchase equipment for the Division of Police Crime Lab. The crime lab needs to purchase a Leeds LCF III Comparison Microscope for use in firearms, tool marks, forensic work. This specialty microscope will compare and identify spent bullets, casings, and tool marks. The special design of the microscope allows an examiner to look at two images at the same time. Deputy Director Hollering, could you speak to the waiver of competitive bidding on this ordinance?
Thank you. Chair Remy, members of council, Leeds Precision Instruments is the sole manufacturer and provider of this specific microscope. All personnel performing these firearms comparison casework in the firearms section have training and experience on the microscope. Any alternative item would not be compatible with the existing training, cameras, accessories, and other microscopes used in the firearms section.
Thank you very much, Deputy Director. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Next is 1943-2024 to authorize and direct the Finance Management Director to enter into a contract for the purchase of two four-year transform infrared spectrometers from Perkin Elmer US LLC for the Division of Police Crime Lab in accordance with the provisions of the Columbus City Code. To authorize the expenditure of $68,904.24 from the general government grant fund. To waive competitive bidding and declare an emergency. The Division of Police needs to purchase two four-year transform infrared spectrometers to be used for the identification of controlled substances at the police crime lavatory. The current FTIR systems were purchased in 2007 and 11 and have been deemed obsolete, no longer serviceable by the manufacturer. However, the attenuated total reflectance accessories used for direct sampling with the FTIR and spectrum software used to operate the FTIR are current and supported. Deputy Director Hollering, could you speak to the waiver of competitive bidding on this one?
Thank you, Chair Remy, members of council. The vendor here is the only manufacturer and distributor of the four-year transform infrared spectrometers that will be compatible with the current attenuated total reflectance accessories and spectrum software that the crime lab currently uses.
Thank you very much, Deputy Director. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, we have ordinance 1974-2024 to authorize the Director of Finance Management to enter into contract with Agilent Technologies for the purchase of three gas chromatograph mass spectrometers to be used by the Division of Police Crime Lab for the analysis of controlled substances in accordance with the bid waiver provisions of the Columbus City Code. To authorize a transfer of fund within the general government grant fund. To authorize the expenditure of $313,373.61 from the general government grant fund and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorized the Director of Finance and Management to enter into contract for the purchase of three gas chromatograph mass spectrometers for the Division of Police Crime Lab. Mass spectrometers are used in the analysis of controlled substances. These mass spectrometers will replace three existing units. In addition, the software used with the mass spectrometers is proprietary and only available through Agilent Technologies. Therefore, alternative mass spectrometer systems from other manufacturers would not meet the Drug Identification Section workload. Deputy Director, one more time, could you speak to the waiver of competitive bidding, please?
Thank you, Chair Remy, members of council. Essentially, this open lab software is used with existing mass spectrometers. The new mass spectrometers will only be able to use the open lab software. It's a proprietary software, so is the mass spectrometer.
Thank you again, Deputy Director. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Doran's Favor, Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, we have 1989-2024 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into a contract for maintenance and repair services for crime lab instruments, especially under Ryder's LLC. To waive the competitive bidding. lab instruments, especially underwriters LLC, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of seventy-six thousand six hundred and twenty-nine dollars from the general fund and to declare an emergency. This equipment is used to process and present evidence for criminal prosecutions, which require strict adherence to rules of evidence and established mandatory timelines. The Division of Police has need for maintenance and repair services with Agilent Technologies, PerkinElmer Health Sciences, Thermo Scientific and Spectra Analysis, especially underwriters manages the consolidation of the various contracts with the aforementioned vendors at a reduced cost for the maintenance and service. Deputy Director Hollering, one more time, could you tell us about the waiver of competitive bidding?
Thank you, Chair Remy, members of council. Especially underwriters contracts the maintenance out with the individual instrument companies, just as the Division of Police would have done, but are able to do so at a twenty to thirty percent discounted rate.
Thank you very much, Deputy Director. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorance Favor, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Passed.
Finally, I have twenty twenty-one twenty-two-four to authorize the appropriation expenditure of up to three million eight hundred thousand from the Collection Fees Fund, to authorize the city attorney to enter into contracts with Capital Recovery Systems Inc., Law Offices of Robert Sugar, LPA, and Leinberger, Gogan, Blair, and Sampson LLP for the collection of delinquent accounts and declare an emergency. This will authorize the city attorney to enter into contracts with collection agents for initial three-year terms, each with the option of two additional one-year extensions, and will authorize payment of court costs and the reimbursement of any overpayments collected from the Collection Fees Fund. This fund is generated by fees collected by collection agents and used to pay the associated collection costs due. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorance Favor, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Passed.
President Harden, that is all I have in my committees this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee chaired by Councilmember Wise. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight, in Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, I have one ordinance on second reading. Let's remember this day for future weeks when we have many more. First, I have eighteen hundred dash twenty-two-four to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Complete General Construction Company for the Moeller Street Overflow Intercepting Sewer in the Moeller Street Area Water Line Improvements Project, to appropriate funds, to authorize a transfer of funds from the Sanitary Reserve Fund and the Water Reserve Fund to the Sanitary Revolving Loan Fund, and to the Water Fresh Water Market Rate Fund, to authorize a transfer of cash and appropriation between projects within the Sanitary Bond Fund, to authorize an expenditure of thirty-nine million nine hundred and forty-six thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-nine cents from the Sanitary Revolving Loan Fund, the Water Fresh Water Market Rate Fund, and the Sanitary Bond Fund to pay for the project and to declare an emergency. The city of Columbus and the state of Ohio entered into a consent order in August of two thousand two to resolve sanitary sewer overflow concerns for the city's sanitary sewer system that requires the city to develop and implement a program to provide adequate capacity in the collection system to address sanitary sewer overflows. The project was identified in integrated plan, and the twenty-fifteen wet weather management plan update report will comply with the consent order and mitigate the combined sewer overflows that discharge into the Siota River, as well as reduce water in basement occurrences in the Moeller Street area. Due to the consent order requiring improvements be substantially completed by July first, twenty-twenty-five, the emergency declaration is requested. May pause there, see if there are any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorance Favor, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That is all I have in my committee tonight, but I do have a code change and rules and policy. May I proceed?
Please.
Thank you. Next, I have sixteen twenty-seven dash twenty-two-four to enact Chapter eleven nineteen of the Columbus City Codes to establish the lead service line replacement program to declare lead service lines in the public water systems to be a public nuisance, to amend Section eleven oh one dot zero three of the Columbus City Codes, and to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to implement the lead service line replacement program to replace lead and galvanized steel water lines in the city distribution system. We all know the health impacts of lead exposure, therefore, it's imperative that we do everything we can as a city to reduce the potential exposure to our residents. Starting on October sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four, it is anticipated that all public water systems will need to comply with the updated lead and copper rule revisions. Under the projected provisions, the Division of Water will need to develop a lead service line replacement program along with associated rules and regulations to begin replacing service lines on private property. This program will prevent potential lead exposure to our Division of Water customers and prioritize replacement of historically underserved and vulnerable populations while fulfilling their obligations to federal and state law and continuing the trend of providing quality water to our residents. Under the program, there will be four pathways for lines to be identified for replacement. First is the infrastructure maintenance pathway, similar to what we experienced in public services earlier in this meeting, which will replace all service lines on city streets that are under construction for a water main or sewer line replacement. Second is an emergency repair replacement pathway. When conducting emergency repairs on the public side, private lines will be replaced. We have a street-by-street pathway, the scheduled proactive replacement of all lead service lines on a designated city street. Prioritizing factors include public health, social equity, and vulnerable populations. Then lastly, we have the schools and daycares pathway, which will prioritize the replacement of lead service lines to licensed schools and daycares. It is estimated that the lead service line replacement program will cost approximately one point two billion dollars over the next thirteen years. I do want to reiterate that the Department of Public Utilities Division of Water currently treats the water to prevent corrosive conditions that could cause the leaching of lead. This protects public health and the city's infrastructure by avoiding corrosive conditions that could lead to premature pipe failure. The city of Columbus's drinking water is safe and clean. Let me pause there and ask the Deputy Director if she has anything else to add to this. Perfect. Let me stop and see if there are any questions or comments from my colleagues.
Councilmember, similar to what Councilmember Bangston said a little while ago, I think, especially when we have these long meetings, there are things that come along that are big, and it's a big deal, and I know it's late into the evening, but this is a big deal, because as we've seen across the country, when we have not stayed on, when municipalities, when cities have not stayed on and taken care of our water source, we can see what happens. And we've read, we've all read stories about this, and we have looked ahead, we have been intentional about how we are, again, caring for our people, and this is a big deal. This is a big deal for our public utilities as we look at the next water plant that's coming in, as we're ensuring that there's efficiency in our systems for our people, and making sure that we have clean drinking water. I mean, that is everything, and making sure that our folks feel safe every time they quite literally turn on the faucet to, you know, boil water, to drink water, to bathe in water. And so I just want to make sure that we take a moment also, even in this late hour, to just commend this work and to acknowledge what a big deal this is for our communities.
Thank you, Councilmember. It is a big deal, to your point, and really, the kudos goes to the department that has put in many, many, many hours, kind of, one, preparing for this moment, and for the work that will be ahead of us. We had a chance to hold a public hearing specifically about this lead line replacement, and it was well received by the community as well as environmental stakeholders who were in attendance. So appreciate you sharing that. Are there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorance Favor, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That is all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Seeing no further business to be coming before council, is there a motion to adjourn? Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorance Favor, Green, Remy, Vice President Harden.
Thank you. We have two non-agenda speakers.